Everyone, it is 7 o'clock. We have a forum. I will call the meeting to order. Are there adjustments to the agenda? The only thing I wanted to know is prior to having the discussion on the appointment to the council liaison position for the BADC, I am asking that we do an executive session and we do a discussion along with Cody Morrison, who is their executive director in their board chair, which is Bob Lord. Okay, I'll try to be a little bit louder. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so under adjustments to the agenda, I'm just noting that before we do item 9G, which is the appointment of the council liaison to the BADC, that we're going to have an executive session. We're going to have a discussion about Cody Morrison, who is their executive director, and Bob Lord, who is their chair. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Look for a motion to prove the consent agenda.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. And I'll just note that under item H, there was a resignation letter from Rosemary Avril, and there was another letter that was provided counsel via email earlier today. Any other discussion for the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. Thank you very much. Moving on to the city clerk and treasurer's report. Carol?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I have to remind people is that the second quarter property taxes are due by next Monday, which is the 15th, and all the usual caveats apply. We do accept US Post Office postmarks, but we do not accept posted meter marks. So if you're going to use a Post Office postmark, we suggest you go in and out, the postal workers hand-cancel your stamp with the date, so we know that it's dated correctly. We also have the drop box by the front door. We also have an online option available through our website. There are service charges that apply to that. I will let you know that the online option available through our website is the official online option. Unfortunately, if you Google "pay Berry City taxes", there are some third-party options out there. What they do make the payments, but what they do is they tap into your bank and they get a check cut, and the check can take time, and so it very likely won't arrive on time. So if you're going to use an online option, please make sure it's the option that's available on our website at berrycity.org. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the clerk or treasurer?
I couldn't hear what she said.
So Carol, we have complaints from the crowd that they are unable to hear. Was that everybody, or? Okay.
So I'm not sure. Can I make myself louder by turning up the volume on my computer? Or just talking louder?
She is here. She's actually in the other room. We have a fairly packed room, and I would not hold it against anybody if they felt like they had to be in a non-packed space. But that speaker probably will not amplify any further. Carol, can you see about your microphone? To see if you can either turn it on or back on, off and on.
So I turned it off. And let me try one other thing. Is that any better?
That is better, yeah.
Okay, good. So a reminder that second quarter property taxes are due this coming Monday, the 15th. And just to repeat briefly, we do accept US Post Office postmarks. We have a drop box by the front door. And we also have an online option available through our website. There are service charges if you use that. And please be sure you're using the online option available on our website and not just Googling "pay Berry City taxes", because there are other third-party vendors out there that aren't timely. So you want to make sure you're using the vendor on our website. Thank you.
Okay. Was everybody able to hear? Okay. Thank you, Carol. Do you have anything under liquor control?
No.
Okay, so moving along to the city manager's report. Steve?
Yeah, just, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Just three or four reminders in addition to my written report. The police department advises us that there are some cat burglars going around neighborhoods, again, trying to look into or get into unlocked cars. So just a reminder, excuse me, to lock your vehicles at night. Keep any valuables out of sight. Certainly preferable to take them inside with you, but be on alert for that. We've been notified by Carl Rogers that the town has extended the yard waste disposal opportunity up at the Berrytown Yard Waste Site for one more week. So it'll be open this Saturday, 8 to 12. It's not open Wednesday. And whether it opens on the 20th or not is weather-dependent. But you have, you have at least one more Saturday. Hopefully, folks have noticed that the Department of Public Works has been circulating through the city for curbside pickups. They hope to be done tomorrow, going through the three wards. If they don't finish tomorrow, they will finish on Friday, Thursday being the holiday. So right now, at least those in Ward 3 have two options left, curbside pickup or the yard waste dump on Saturday. And lastly, just a reminder to everybody that the winter parking ban, the overnight street parking ban, goes into effect on Monday, the 14th, Monday, the 15th. But technically, it starts at 1 o'clock Monday morning. So actually, it's Sunday night. A little confusing, but I guess what I'd say is on Sunday, the 14th, make sure your cars are off the street. There will be courtesy warnings for at least a week. So, or at least a week in advance. So hopefully, people will be reminded. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager? Councilor Hammerick?
Thank you, Mayor. I had one question about just the meeting space. I know the past four meetings, it's that rooms hovered between, I think about 85 and 90 degrees. And I was curious if we could meet in Alumni Hall in future meetings.
Certainly, the council can meet where it prefers. If we, if you prefer to go to Alumni Hall, you'll just, we'll just have to deal with the IT logistics. But hopefully, there's no meeting next week. I've spoken with Jeff Bergeron. The issue is we're waiting for the mechanical contractor to come in and trace a fault in the thermostat wiring. And I would like to think that will be done by the time of the next meeting. I apologize. There's a meeting next week. It's the 23rd. There's no meeting. I'll work with Jeff to see if we, I guess, I think we're at the mercy of the contractor, but we'll try to get that fixed. I did ask him to turn off the boilers this evening. So hopefully, that won't be generating any more heat tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the manager?
Just one other question about the briefing on our, the DEC letter that we received.
Yeah, that'll be on, that'll be either in the manager's report or on the council agenda next week. I mean, I think, I think the communications are going well. I don't have the details. I'll get caught up on that. But I think the agency is satisfied with the responses. I will confirm that.
Anything else? Hearing and seeing none. Moving on to visitors and communications. This is for an item that is not on the agenda. I'm assuming a lot of people are here for the flag item. So this would be for something different than that. So Jesse, please come up and introduce yourself. And then Steve.
We got here.
Yeah.
I'm Jesse Rosado from Merchant Street. I came last week about our parking situation. And, and I have been reached out again from, by the Transportation Advisory Committee, the chairman of that. And this is certainly, in all due respect to him, he's doing a great job. But I just wanted to come in and just like reiterate and just refocus again about this issue. Okay? And for the counselors that work here, I want to take us back to like just a quick timeline, like what the situation was up there. So Merchant Street started with a traffic problem. It started with an organization of our neighborhood watch committee. And everyone who showed up at that neighborhood watch committee was like, hey, man, there's a traffic problem up here. We have a lot of high volume. We have high speeds. We have children in our street. What can we be done? Our first thing was when we tried to kind of bring this up, they said, well, it's not really a city council issue. You got to go to Transportation Advisory Committee. And when we went to try to do that, Transportation Advisory Committee at that point was kind of defunct and hadn't met in more than a year. And we were like, we're advised, you know, you're referring us to a committee that's not even available. What's happening here? And so then we came back and got some help from the council to have it heard by the council. We organized a neighborhood. More than a dozen people from Merchant Street came down here and spoke to the council, the people with things that they drew. This plan would be better. I mean, it was kind of a, maybe a little over the top, but it was, you know, but it was a good night, you know, and definitely, everybody felt heard. It was, it sparked the reorganization of the, of the tech. And then we went through that channel again. There were some of you at that meeting. And from that meeting, we ended up with four things committed to by the city for Merchant Street. We were told that we would get a speed table. There was some signage that was left over that kind of diverted traffic up through the neighborhood to get to Route 14 that maybe was from like when there was construction downtown. And so they kind of needed that, that diversion. And so they committed to taking down the signs to stop diverting traffic up through the neighborhood. They committed to ballbox to narrow the street, so it would slow the traffic. And then they committed to, and then they committed to an additional crosswalk or two, if I'm remembering right. So there was four things. And we're at 50% now. We got our speed table and we love it. Let me tell you, that speed table makes all the difference. A really good job there. And, and also, they've taken down the signs. And just in defense of the roads department and just the timing of this whole deal, this was 2019 that we came through. And so by the time we got all the way through the process, it was kind of about this time of year. So I know Ms. Ahearn was worried about whether or not the asphalt company would even be able to deliver the asphalt, to be able to do stuff. So we were kind of like right up against, like, you know, up against the clock. And so we didn't get the speed table right away. It took some time. But that, and then COVID hit, and so.
Jesse, I'm going to just ask you to.
Yeah. Sure. So, so what has happened since then is we're only 50%, right? And instead of getting ballboxes, our parking has been taken away on one side. When I came to the council the last time, they said, oh, no, that was a mistake. You guys shouldn't have, we shouldn't have signed that. We shouldn't have taken away the traffic, the parking on that side, the, so to open up the streets. And, and so here we are, like, last, so, but they repainted, repainted it back the same way. And so it's kind of like, and so we're a couple of years in, and, and so it's, and then now, it's kind of like, well, just go back to the tech. Like, go back to square one. Like, no, man, we're not going back to square one. You know what I'm saying? Like, we got to, like, why don't we just bring some paint and, you know, get, you know, get this stuff done, you know? And so anyways, I just want to bring it back and say like, that doesn't seem like a great option. Like, maybe we can just, you know, kind of somehow or another, like, talk about it offline or whatever. But we don't want to go back to square one and reorganize the neighborhood or whatever. Let's just get to what the city committed to. And my final point is this, and I know that a lot of you guys know this, but once a city commits to something, that is owed. You know what I'm saying? This is not like, oh, we commit and then just don't do it. You know, and I know you guys believe in that. And so I hope in this instance, we can, we can get to, get to where it's supposed to be and, and just kind of finalize. Thanks.
Thank you.
The city manager and councilor Hammerick.
Sure. So Steve, further response, I'm sure. And then, are you speaking to this issue after?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, since Jesse's appearance last week, I did speak with Bill Ahearn. There is a reason for the striping. I'm going to let him address it. I will talk with Bill and have him reach out directly to Jesse and will provide an update either in the manager's report or as an agenda item at the next meeting.
Sam, you have a.
I was just wondering, do we need to look at timelines? Is there something else that we need to do to be responsive to Jesse?
So the only other item that we would want to do for a response is look at what we have for our streets maintenance plans. We only have a certain amount of money, and I'm not sure where it is on that plan along with everything else. And I'm sure that's part of what the response is going to be from city manager or our DPD Deputy Director. Okay. So Councilor Hammerick, is there a question on this?
Yes. Well, as you know, I'm the liaison for the Transportation Advisory Committee. And I think things are, things are getting better with that, the Transportation Advisory Committee, that there's a, Chair Hellian has compiled a list of everything that's been discussed over the past two years. Certainly, Merchant Street is not the only citizen concern that has just not received any, any staff attention. It's tough to know for an average citizen, let alone, and a counselor, to know how to insert these priorities into the work program without a capital improvement program. And, and many of the decisions that were discussed and made at TAC were never documented. There were no minutes up on the website. But I think, I think we're getting that in much better shape and moving forward. But I think it continues to be a problem. I know just on Hill Street, the center yellow lines were striped. The TAC discussed that last year as we don't need center lines, we need outside lines. Because it sends the message that this is a traffic sewer and a space for speeding. And it's the same thing on Hill Street or Merchant Street when you remove the parking. And, and I think, I know we can do better, but we have to change the way we do business. And, and it may mean that there needs to be a governance change where certain decisions need to actually be granted real power to the Transportation Advisory Committee or to council. And maybe that'll require an amendment to the streets ordinance. But I, I'd like to thank Director Ahearn. He's working really hard to make those improvements. And I know that is working with the planning director. As I understand, the council has approved a traffic calming and bike pedestrian planning project. We'll see if that gets funded. But, but we have, we have work to do in this area to start solving problems that citizens are facing right outside their door that make a tremendous difference for their quality of life. I just think we must do better. From Merchant Street to Prospect Street to Berlin Street to Hill Street, to Circle Street, it's everywhere. And, and we need a system-wide approach to solve these problems.
Thank you. Anyone else for the question that was brought up? So the street that I think they were talking about, Merchant Street is one of them. Councilor Hammerick brought up a couple others.
I just want to make sure, like, that wooded part through Merchant Street of that stop signs. The upper part, if that does not get narrower, because I'm legally blind, so I walk that a lot. And as it is, it's pretty sketchy without a sidewalk there. Really don't need any narrower through there, otherwise it's playing the purpose of.
Yeah, Councilor Waz's act lives up that way too. So I'm sure.
Yeah. And just to clarify, what Jesse was talking about was restoring the parking that previously existed between the Warren Street intersection, all the way down to downtown. There used to be parking on one side of the street, and that was accidentally taken away. And I would just add that I agree with Jesse that I don't see a need for the Transportation Advisory Committee to look at this again. He's right. We decided this two and a half years ago, and we just need to finish the implementation.
Just echoing what I think I've been hearing people say is that since, it sounds like it was something that was promised previously. Love to see follow-through. Fairly quickly.
Yeah. She had stated that she would like to make sure that we see follow-through with promises that are made. Councilor Sean Bell had reiterated she would like to see follow-through with the promises that have been made. Okay, any other comments on that item? I see none. Steve, can you come up and please state your name for the record?
Absolutely. My name is Steve England. I am a resident of College Street here in Berry. I am here to actually commend the city of Berry, the police department, the DPW, for their help with us in assisting with the Granite City 5K Run Walker Veterans. If we did this past Saturday, it was a huge success. And I really, and we couldn't have done it without the cooperation of the city and its employees and so on. I will say that last year, because of this event between the Sons of American Legion, which I'm the commander, the Elks, and the Berry Partnership, we were able to give the veterans place in Northfield last year $13,000 on that one event. This year, we are well beyond that. I'm not going to say the number yet. We will find it out when we do it. But it is an absolute testament to the generosity, the cooperation, the spirit of kindness and teamwork that exists in the city and central Vermont, that this went off so well. And I have to say, thank you so much for the city. Another aside, when the mayor, as Lucas, not as the mayor, and I were putting all the cones back in the DPW barn after the event, we happened to be there and I noticed, I looked over and said, wow, they had an American flag hanging outside of the DPW. It's absolutely horrible. It is in tatters. It is faded. I looked at Lucas and I said, this is not good. We can't, as, just as who I am and a citizen here, I can't accept that. So that being said, on behalf of my wife Lisa and myself, as citizens of Berry, I want to present the city of Berry with a new American flag to replace the one that is at the DPW barn. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
So first off, since, since I was there with Steve for this, I just want to make sure everybody's fine with me asking for the acceptance of the American flag. You're fine, okay.
Do you need a motion or anything?
If you would like to, it'd be great to accept the donation of the American flag.
Make the motion to accept the donation from Steven?
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'll be happy to dispose of the old moments, right? If we do that.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Steve. Anything else under visitors and communications? Hearing and seeing none. The next section, well, before we get off from visitors and communications, there are a couple of things that I do need to do based on last meeting. And these are to offer a couple of apologies based on this, on behalf of the city. So first off, I need to apologize to the Berry Partnership. So on behalf of the city, the comments that were made during last week's meeting, is mentioned there wasn't any vitality in the Wheelock Building, which we know is untrue based on all the growing online presence and downtown activity that is promoted through that organization. When I stopped by there last Friday, it was also great to see the collaboration underway with the students in the work-based learning program in that building, which is respalding high school. And I look forward to the report from Tracy next week when she comes in to present further. I also need to say an apology to the Berry Rotary and DCF. And I apologize to both. One week after the Rotary was nominated as the organization going the extra mile, highlighting all the efforts that they did over the past year, a false perception was given that they were in the Wheelock Building without a proper process or permission by council. The intent was to make sure that a signed agreement was in place with them, which was what was on the agenda. And when that, that was one of our council priorities. So we know that the work that has been provided is critical for our youth that are removed from their homes during after-hours emergencies. And looking forward to my continued work or the city's continued work with that organization and DCF as part of that. And our ground rules, we do have that we should not be judging people. We should be addressing issues. So I do have to extend apology to Mr. Judd. Our ground rule states that we should be practicing mutual respect and debate those issues and not their personalities. And I'm hopeful that we can do that again tonight. And lastly, I'm going to offer an apology to Manager McKenzie. I think this is the most important one. Neighbors and residents have done nothing but come to me saying how clean and green the city has looked this year compared to past years. You were able to manage the city through a pandemic and at the end of it, had a $500,000 surplus. We've seen a large decrease in the vacant properties. We've seen gains in our businesses. Crime is especially low and, and general, the property crime being way down. And almost every city policy has been reviewed in the last five years. So not just those items, but I spoke into your peers and they all keep you in high regard. And council has been aware of all the accomplishments you have been given. That was a part of the report that was given as part of our priorities on no later ago than October 26. So Steve, I just want to offer you that apology.
So thank you very much. I appreciate that. But, but to the extent that things are happening in the city, it's not just because of me. It's a team effort. We got a lot of hard-working department heads and staff. So it's, it's not a one-man show. It's a lot of people who are working hard on behalf of the city.
So with that, we'll go under new business. The first item for new business is the Council Christmas for Kids Coin Drop. It says scheduled for December 4. This is under Council Booton. Michael?
Yeah. I'm glad there's so many people here so that I can bring it up. We are doing the Christmas for Kids Coin Drop this year, I assume. I think that, you know, last year's weren't able to, obviously, due to COVID. But looks like we're going to be able to do it this year. 8 o'clock in the morning till 11:12, somewhere around there. Collect money and then we give it to the, I'm going to mess up the name, the Berry Juvenile Association. And that's basically run by Jason Flurry. And he purchases the gifts. And then the police officers deliver the gifts to the children. And it's a great opportunity for us to make a good impact in these children's lives. And usually, you know, and I've said it before, that these are going to be high-risk individuals. You know, poverty does drive, you know, interactions with police officers. And the interaction that, that this is, is an extremely positive interaction. Our police officers hand-delivering gifts, creating that positive impact to them. And I just wanted to put it on the agenda, to put it on everybody's radar and let them know that it's coming up.
So Counselor, is your intent to make sure that we are aware of where the money is going and to have a motion to make sure that council is in agreement?
I mean, that's fine. I'm okay with that. If council wants to do that, or we could talk about it after the money is collected. I'm assuming that nobody has any problem with it going to the place that it went last year. It is a nonprofit and it's, the trustees are Jason Flurry, Bonnie Barolt. Am I correct on that? Is that the last name?
The Bonnie Bro.
Okay, thank you. And Larry Eastman.
Maybe we could talk about after the money is collected. I would like to discuss that after the money is collected.
So the difficulty with that is when you're out at an event and you're collecting money, people always ask you what it's for. I mean, we don't have to make the decision tonight if we want to push this off until the next meeting and have that as a further discussion. I think we can. But I'd rather have that as a decision before standing out in the middle of the road and asking for money.
I have no issue with the organization. It's going to have some issue with delivering presents to children who, at Christmas time, many children who are in great need get many presents from different organizations. And I was working with a family where the police came to their door to deliver presents. And he was a working-class dad and he was actually embarrassed to be. It was a photo opportunity for the police delivering the charity to him. It didn't really feel good. I think it's great, you know, kids in need, need so many things. And there's so many things we could do with that money. You know, you could enrich school activities. You could have more scholarships to recreational programs. There's lots of things that we could do that I think would have more of an impact and be less potentially not feel as good to the parents. People don't always want to be recipients of charity. I think there's other ways to do it. That's all I'll say.
Councillor, is there any other discussion on that?
Councillor Booton put his hand up and Renita Marshall has her hand up.
So councillor Booton, I'll have you go first.
Yeah, I just want to state that this is a long-running Christmas for Kids program. I mean, it's, it pre-existed before me. And, you know, for history of it, I would, I think I saw a former mayor, Thomas Lozahn, on here. And I'm sure he could definitely speak to the history of it. I mean, if you're referring, I think we need to deal with the money part. If, if we're talking about not sending the money to the Juvenile Officers Association, I think we need to have that conversation now.
No, I think it's fine for it to go to that organization. I'm asking that we not maybe necessarily do presents to people who may not want those presents.
Well, the, the names come from the, from the school. So, I mean, when, when Officer Flurry gets the names, he buys presents for the kids. And I'm assuming the school also, it's my understanding in the past that the school, you know, filters out those that are already getting gifts. But yeah, I mean, certainly I'll circle back with Officer Flurry.
Thank you.
Renita?
Hi, I just wanted to offer up my assistance for this. If councillor Booton or Officer Flurry want to have discussions, I've been doing this exact same thing for about twelve years and I have a process in place so that every family knows that we would be helping them. They have to offer. They have to tell us what is okay to buy, what is not okay to buy. And I just wanted to offer up that assistance if that is really a concern that it's just a photo op or that families are getting items that they don't need. I just wanted to offer that up as a resource. I'm happy to meet and discuss and compare notes. That's all. I've been doing this for twelve years and I haven't run into issues where people are getting lots of duplicate stuff. So I would be happy to compare notes, like I said.
Martin, and can you state your last name for the record?
I can. Martin Prevo. Former Berry City Police Officer, one of the charter members of the organization that started that toy run. And it is in fact toys for kids. We did in fact get the names from the school. And if, I think that if you needed a little more vetting on that, that could certainly be done. But I would really hate to see the the intent of the program change to go from toys to scholarships. That's not what it was. It was always toys. It was to give the children at the holiday season, a gift that they may not have otherwise received. And if it needs a little more vetting, then I think that can be done. And I would certainly work with Jason Flurry on that. You know, unfortunately for poor Jason, there used to be five or six of us spearheading that. And we've all retired from the city. And Jason's the one left behind, the sole juvenile officer. And I suppose he could use some help with the organization on it. And I respect the fact that, that, you know, there are some people that do not want to receive any assistance. This was never, ever in the beginning, set up as a photo op for anything. I did this for many, many, many years. And it was never set up for that. So if someone took advantage of that, that should be addressed. That, that's not an acceptable practice. The governor did get involved at times. But when, when that happened, it was always with the recipient's expressed permission to be used as a photo op for the governor's purposes, I suppose. So I just wanted to say that, that that's something that's near and dear to my heart that certainly I don't want to see change too much from its original concept. Thank you.
Linda? Linda McRae?
I'm sorry, I must have raised my hand by mistake.
Okay. So I'm just going to look around. I mean, with those comments, are people willing to do this for tonight? So I'd look for a motion to approve the Kids for Coin, Kids Coin Drop on December fourth with the fund being the same that it's been for the past couple of years. So. And who wants to person, who wants to say? Okay, so motion by councillor Wazizak, second by councillor Sean Bell. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Thank you very much. Councillor, we are now on to item nine B, which is the discussion and our approval of the Flag Display for Veterans Day. It's under councillor Booton's name as according to our policy, it has to be sponsored by a member of council. So for this, if there is any public comment first, what I'll do is I'll allow two minutes to comment for anybody individually. And then that way their council can deliberate afterward.
And just while this gentleman's walking, I'll just note there's a couple of hands virtually as well.
Sure. So Chuck, can you just make sure you state your name for the record?
Yes, I will. Make it settled in here. Hello, I'm Chuck Barney. I am chair of Berry Area Veterans Council and commander of the VFW Post McKenzie Leicester Post seven ninety. Mayor, city council members and other distinguished guests, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Not only those two things, I'm a retired first sergeant EA from Vermont Army National Guard Artillery. Ron Tomlin, if you're watching, King of Battle, whoops. I had deployments to Iraq and Afghanistan along with humanitarian deployments to New Orleans after Hurricane Katrina and Southern Vermont after Tropical Storm Irene. I've been chair of this Veterans Council for probably seven or eight years, which is, which the council was established in nineteen sixty-seven. Since nineteen sixty-seven, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, the American Legion Post ten, the Elks, Berry Elks Lodge fifteen thirty-five, and the Sons, the three oh two Sons of the Civil War camp have been elaborating on doing Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and lately the flags along Main Street. Most importantly, I am a representative to give voice to all the veterans to support the flying of the flag across Main Street who are not here tonight. The flag is not a symbol of our politics, but represents our values, our citizens, and the sacrifices of the millions who made for that flag. When I was overseas, the best part of coming back into the, into our base was looking up and seeing Old Glory flying. That was the best part of the, I mean, you could have had a real miserable time outside the base. But seeing that, just it made you help, made you, made you happy. If you're wondering, the flags flying on every light pole along Main Street belong to the constituents of Berry City, Berry Town, Orange, Washington. Those constituents gave donations to the council, Veterans Council. So we could buy every bracket, every clamp, every pole, every flag, not only once, but twice. We've asked organizations to help take care of those flags. And they did this to honor a family member, a veteran family member, or a veteran friend, or just in general, any veterans. As a council, Veterans Council, there's a few of us that take them up and down every year. There's a few minutes when we take them down, a lot of people come up to us saying, why are you taking them down? Because they can't leave them up during the winter. You see what happened to them last summer.
So Chuck, I'm going to have to ask you to.
Okay. For your time and favorable consideration in this matter, I know a lot of people and veterans would be extremely proud and happy with the city when they see the, the flag flying across Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. There, anybody else? Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak to the request? Harold?
My name is Harold Briggs. I live at Nine Avenue Avenue in the city. And I just wanted to remind everyone that this holiday has been observed for over a hundred years. In fact, this is the centenary of the dedication of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier in Washington this week. And let's not forget what's written on the statue. They shall not grow old as we are left to roll. Age shall not worry them, though the years condemn. That the going down of the sun, and in the morning, you will remember them. One good way to remember them is that the big, beautiful American flag flying across Main Street.
Thank you.
Martin?
Yes, thank you. Martin Prevo again. I'm going to make it short and sweet, hopefully. Some people say that's hard for me to do. I listened to last week's council meeting and the, the personal attacks were quite severe last week. And I hope we all had a week to reflect. And I appreciate the apology, Mr. Mayor. I hope it's sincere from the council and not just from your heart. The American flag is just that. It's an American flag. It doesn't represent anyone's political affiliation. There were some accusations that a couple of councillors, maybe three, indicated that the reason they're opposed to this is because of the person signing the petition or the, the application, I'm sorry, to, to fly it. That said, that's recorded. That can't be taken back, unfortunately. If, if it changes your view, I'll put my name on that permit, okay? I'd like to see that flag fly in dedication of all the people that have lived, fought and died for that flag. It means nothing more than a unified country. It is not a political statement. It has no affiliation with any political party. It is our flag. That comes from my history. I migrated to the city of Barry in nineteen seventy-eight. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-eight. I've served on that council. I've served on school boards. I've served on many civic organizations in the city. I have dedicated my life to the city. I still reside in the city despite the fact that I own a house in another city. I still live here. I have a lot of pride in this city. And quite frankly, what's happening is nothing to be very proud of. Please fly that flag because it's the American flag, not be, and, and don't say no just because you have some disdain for the person that's applying to fly it. He is applying for that, for this, for the community. That flag brings this community together. It has demonstrated that. It is, it has done it again and again and again. And for those of you who don't know me, I worked for the city of Barry for thirty-two years. I served as a police officer in this community. I, I love this community. I'd like to see us bond and get back together. That's all I really have to say. Thank you for your time.
Sarah Prejean?
Thank you. Sarah Prejean. I live at sixteen Palmaso Plaza. So I watched last week's meeting and I watched the meetings in September and felt the need to come and weigh in. This is my first city council meeting, although I've lived in the city for years. For the record, I too am an elected official. I've sat as a school board director off and on since two thousand seventeen. I currently chair the finance committee. So I hope you all understand that I have an appreciation for what it is like and what it means to be an elected official in this community. I know all too well what it's like to get emails and phone calls from constituents that are displeased when things go wrong or, you know, whether things are your fault or not. But what I heard at last week's meeting, what I heard back in September in regards to the flag, is wrong. I don't know Mr. Judd. I don't know him personally. I live in Ward Three, so I really only briefly followed his city council campaign. I have seen things he's posted on social media, fully willing to admit that his political views do not align with mine. But this is not a political issue and I would challenge that designation on the action item in tonight's packet. This is the raising of the American flag on American soil. It's a flag that the city owns. It's being raised by city employees over the city on Veterans Day. Now, you were elected to a nonpartisan council. You do not designate your political affiliation on a Berry City ballot. So I don't care if you don't like Mr. Judd. I don't care that he has pending lawsuits with the city, which by the way, is his right under Vermont statutes. All I heard from the discussion last week and in September amongst this council is that you folks don't want to approve this because you don't want him to win. That's petty. If this is how the council behaves, I think you all should reevaluate what you're doing here. You are charged with governance and representation over all members of this community, whether you like them or not. So I would implore you to raise that flag.
Jeffrey, Tuper Giles, and then Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a former city councillor who actually brought this to the council many years ago while I was sitting as a councillor and contacted the building owners to make sure that the hooks were still available to be used and that they were in good repair and that we wouldn't have any insurance issues, I did my legwork and homework on this. I find what these past couple, few meetings and these councillors have said to be completely self-serving and not for the good of the city. And the woman who spoke previous to me said it very well that these councillors were voted in to represent everyone. And lately, all I have ever seen from this council is a political divide because it's us against them. And that has got to stop if Berry City is going to move forward. This whole idea that we need Democrats or Republicans in there to further our, no, it's the American flag. Hang the thing across to Main Street and rejoice that we actually are well enough city, an affluent enough city, that we can do that. This is ridiculous. And to say that we don't like someone and we're going to deny it on that basis has become far too deep with this council and it's been proven time and time again. And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you apologizing, but I think those councillors need to apologize for themselves. This isn't on you. This is on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Rosado?
I'm Jesse Rosado. And I was here last week and accidentally caught this flag debate. I was here for a totally different reason. And so I, I got to witness what we, what, what's being discussed here. I also paid attention in the media and on social media to the flag debates surrounding September eleventh. Listen, I'm in support of the American flag. My, my credibility is I'm a morning kindergarten kid who went home to World War Two grandfather and sat with him until mom got home from work. And in that time with my grandfather, I, I listened to a lot of stories about flying over Germany, about the thirty-one or so missions that had to be happened there, about the men who were stationed all over this big aircraft, some of them using manual weapons to defend it while they're trying to carry out their mission. And so when I think about what Veteran Day means, it is about those stories and about the people in those stories that my grandfather was telling me about when I was five years old. When I think about what September eleventh means, it's about the police officers and the firefighters and the people that bring the boats to take people off of Manhattan Island while the towers are burning and all of the folks that, that were heroes on that day. And so, of course, I'm in support of flying the American flag. To the point, however, is that the way that this has been brought to this council and how politicized it is, I'm not sure that it's solely the, you know, it's a chicken and egg conversation. But the person that brought it is a very, very political person in this town who has very ideological thoughts in the agenda. And the agenda, I don't believe, is... My personal take is it's a very selfish and self-centered agenda, based on politics and trying to make a point and trying to monopolize public meetings and push back against a liberal council. And that's really not what this is about, man. This is about the people that save, that are heroes, that serve the country. And so I support flying the flag. But man, I wish it was a VFW that would have brought the proposal. I wish it would have been someone that's just a little bit more clean of a reputation around town, not to be disparaging of anyone, but that's my comment. Thanks.
So, come on up.
I'm here for the very same reasons. My grandfather, my father...
Can you state your name for the record, though?
Cheryl Anderson. Served in World War I, World War II, my ex-husband in Vietnam. And I don't want any politics in this. I think, and I think of what's happening in the country right now, I think that a lot of those vets who have passed on would be throwing over in their graves. And I think that the flag issue could have been handled in a much more productive fashion. It's too bad that Mr. Judd got involved to the degree he didn't work that out prior to a council meeting. I love my country, and the people who have served deserve the most respect and should not be tied into any political view, especially at this point in time.
Thank you.
I'm here to obviously support flying the flag on Veterans Day and Memorial Day or any other day that's significant. And again, I believe that politics aside has nothing to do with that. I'm brought up in a military family. My husband's a vet. My son is in the Navy right now. To me, the flag needs something very different in all those that represent it. You know, the VFW is basically a home. You know, I'm an auxiliary member, but it's someplace you walk in and not to get into too much. But anyway, I think for everybody, it's sad that it's come to this. I wasn't even aware that it had to be an application, no matter whose name is on it. I think that it should be an automatic. We shouldn't even be here discussing if we're gonna fly the flag. And you know, it means something different to everybody, but I think we can all be educated even tonight. We realize the order of the flags and the height, and that's something that I think we can all look at and say, you know, this is what it means to me or a veteran means to me, and we all have family members. But I'm here to just obviously support it. I'm someone that doesn't wanna look at problems. I wanna look at solutions. Hutch Crane is willing to fly it if we can't have a more permanent solution. I heard about some anchors on the building, but when I heard about the issue, I was saddened that it came to some folks not supporting it. I don't care who's on the name or not. To me, there's veterans that I don't know that fought for us to all be here and have our freedom of speech. And my children, my daughter made me this shirt. One of my most proudest moments is when my children thank a veteran that they don't even know. And now they're old enough, they bought them a lunch or something in a restaurant anonymously. It's like, that's to me what we're all here for, and the flag to me is united. Right now, we all need to be united. You know, when I look at a flag, I'm no more proud. It's like, you know, the American flag, or at camp we have also the Vermont flag from my father-in-law who was servant and a police officer. And it's like, that to me, I look at that and it just, it does, it brings the glory. Like Danny said, you know, I mean, to me, it's not even anything up for discussion. It's a matter of how it's gonna happen, not if. And I think, everybody, I know it's a hard position, you know, to hold, but I think you gotta separate your differences, you know, and not make it personal and just support those who've supported us and still do. So, thank you all.
Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Barbara Drooge. I live at 181 Merchant Street. And I was appalled when there was a problem with the flag being hung up for 9/11. My father was the chief of Berlin Fire Department. He passed away before 9/11 happened. But there were a lot of ordinary people there. There were firefighters, policemen. A lot of people died that day, and the least we could do was hang a flag and honor them. And it's the same for the veterans. My grandfather was in World War II. Me, hanging the flag is not a political thing. Like everybody said, it's to honor our veterans. They gave their lives for us. Whether they came back or not, their life was never the same for a lot of them. And I think we owe them that much respect. And I may be mistaken, I'm not sure, but I believe that with Mr. Judd, I believe he was in the Navy, and that could be why it means so much to him to have that hung on Veterans Day because he is a veteran. It's personal to him, I'm sure. It would be for me. I've obviously never been military, but no, I think we owe veterans the respect to hang it. It's not a political thing.
Any other public comment?
Jeffrey has his hand up.
So Jeffrey, you spoke once. We'll give you an extra 30 seconds just because you didn't use your full time last time.
I just wanted to add that I think that the counselors who made it clear that they don't like Mr. Judd should recuse themselves from this vote. Thank you.
The two counselors that made comments last meeting recused themselves for the vote. That was just a recommendation by a person from the public. Any other comment from the public? Okay. Hearing and seeing none? Oh. Okay, Tom?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
I'm doing well. I just wanna start by thanking all of our veterans who may be listening, thanking them for their service. That is what Veterans Day is all about. It's a day like Memorial Day that, when I served the city, I held near and dear to my heart. I missed one Veterans Day celebration during my tenure as mayor. And that's when I fulfilled the promise to take Karen to Paris, but that promise was conditioned on the fact that we happened to be there on Veterans Day, and I said, "We need to go to Normandy." And I have to tell you, Mr. Mayor, I brought a plaque back. I brought some sand. And I will tell you that that experience, witnessing so many French citizens honoring a United States holiday, Veterans Day, on the shores of Normandy, that was really one of the most moving experiences of my life. I hope the council can rise above all of this and simply approve this request. And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a point of order. Unfortunately, Counselor Wazizak crossed the line last week. He demonstrated an incredible disdain for the applicant. This application is not about judging an applicant. It is about Veterans Day. It is about our values, and it is about an application. And unfortunately, Counselor Wazizak, at this point in time, has no right to be sitting on the dais. He needs to recuse himself from this vote as a point of order. No reasonable person could have listened to his remarks last week and drawn the conclusion that he was not prejudiced against the applicant. And so for that reason, I will not accept a vote by Counselor Wazizak on this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I see two more hands are up. Michael and then Bernadette.
So I'll allow Bernadette to go first.
Yeah, Michael, I was gonna say, we're gonna have council deliberation afterwards. So Bernadette?
Hi, thank you. I would like to see everyone vote on this application. The application is being sponsored by Counselor Buden. And last week, things did get out of hand. I can understand the feelings of the people who spoke. The feeling that someone who has used the flag against our democracy made it a challenge to even think about. Also, last week, the flag application was not presented. The city manager came to the city council to discuss the logistics of hanging the flag. There was not an application made to the city council at that time. So I think the city council has made their apology and that they should all go forward and participate. That is why they're there. I would like my counselors to vote, and I trust that they will vote their conscience and in a fair way. Thank you.
So, just making sure, end of public comment. So, counsel, before we do start with deliberation, we will discuss conflict of interest. I'm gonna note, personally, I am a member of the Sons of the American Legion, a member of the Elks, and a member of the VFW Auxiliary. I'm not a member of the Sons of the Civil War, but that's three of the four groups that do make up the very area of veterans. I am not a member of the council, though. I have volunteered for them to hang up those flags on Main Street. So I don't see that as a conflict. I did not know of the letter beforehand, nor did I know of the application until Mr. Judd submitted it on October 19. At that point, he was looking for what the process was, and then the application was submitted on the 22nd. And at that point, that was something that staff had handled. So just wanted to make sure that that is pointed out and aware for everyone, making sure people are fine with that. Does any other counselor wanna speak to conflicts of interest if they feel like they may happen?
Yeah, so I just, I wanna address a couple of things. The first thing I want to address is that, as I said last week, and I still think this is true, and I know that there are many folks listening to this that probably will not believe me. But to those of you who have not had a personal conversation with me, for those of you who may not know me personally and may only know me through articles in the newspaper or comments on social media, I want you to know that my intent is the same as yours. My intent is to prevent the flag from being used as a political tool, which is what I felt was happening with the last flag request and this one. I want to share that, well, first and foremost, I wanna share that I have no intention of recusing myself from this vote, and I have every intention of voting in favor of flying the flag for Veterans Day. I want folks to understand that I do not feel that I disparaged anybody on anything that's not factual. I believe I have shared facts about what I believe to be Mr. Judd's intention with these things. I'm also the first person to say that impact and intent are two very different things. I do not trust the intent of the applicant, but I do think that the impact of flying this flag for Veterans Day would be a huge positive for our community. I also want to respond to accusations that I am not patriotic. Anybody who knows me on a personal level knows how fundamentally false that is. My grandfather flew in Europe in World War II, fighting actual Nazis, fighting ideology that we are seeing spreading across the country today. My grandfather was in the Navy, and that's how he originally met my man. The military is very, very deeply ingrained in my family history. And this is not a joke. I literally plan my vacations around national historic sites, including the Civil War battlefield that I just visited in the city of New Orleans and the National World War II Museum, which I was at four days ago in the city of New Orleans, seeing the Higgins boat, the original Higgins boat that was made of wood that went to the beaches of Normandy. I can recite every president that we have ever had in order and the years in which they served in that office. I love this country very, very much. That's why I'm on the city council. That's why when I was kicked out when I was 15 years old, I did not despair. I did not let myself fall into bad communities. I worked to make it better because no 15-year-old in the richest country on earth should have to struggle just for housing and just for food. So no, I do not trust the intent, but I do trust the impact of this. I will vote to raise this flag in honor of Walter Glenn in World War II, in honor of Edward Wazizak Sr. from the Navy. The people who served in the military protected everybody's right to free speech. And that includes very harsh criticism towards elected officials, but that also empowers elected officials to express their own opinion. My own opinion and Mr. Judd's own opinion are both equally valid under the First Amendment, and I respect that and I understand that. But when I... The things our veterans deserve are safe housing, our good quality affordable health care, are to be taken care of by the country who put them in harm's way in the first place. And that work goes much, much, much deeper than flying a giant flag across Main Street. Not that symbols are not important. Symbols are very important. The American flag is important. The ideals that the American flag stands for are incredibly important. And that's what I try to do every day. And I don't think that, we've heard a lot about the term "political." Everything is politics. The entire political layout of our country comes back to the politics of 1776, comes back to Betsy Ross and George Washington in a log cabin sowing the first American flag. That was politics, and so is this. So I will vote to fly the flag. I do believe in all of the great ideals of 1776, of 1865. And I just really hope that all of the folks who have accused this council, not just of playing politics, whatever that means to every individual person, but of being anti-American, because though we have very different opinions on it, we are all trying to prevent the flag from being used as a political tool, I think we all need to honor that together. And I wanna thank every one of those veterans who have served, who have lost their lives. And that's all.
Thank you. Is there any other counselor that would like to speak to any conflicts of interest? Hearing and seeing none. Steve, I just wanna make sure, has there been any other questions about the policy that has been presented to you? There's no? Okay.
Counselor Buden has his hand up.
Yeah, and then I just wanna ask one other question. Are there any other questions from council on the policy before we move forward? Counselor Buden?
Make a motion to approve and hang the flag.
Seconded.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? Yes?
I would just like to say I am also voting yes on this flag because the three Marines that I talked to yesterday that are homeless wishes that we pass through this, and just because they want us to spend time on homelessness issues and not on this flag. I would also like to say that no matter what I vote on this, there will probably be a flag flown, because I've heard comments that even if we don't vote yes, there is gonna be a flag flown. So I would like to say that I've only heard from one person about this flag. The other comments I've heard tonight, I've only had one phone call about somebody in favor of this flag being flown. All the vets that I work with at my office have not said, "Can you please just move by this flag and work on housing issues? I'm getting us a home." Now, I have, when I was back, if you wanna talk about 9/11 and that flag, I cannot tell you how many comments I got in my email about how I was a communist, how I was a socialist, how I should resign. Now, you're saying that flags are polarizing us. You're saying that this issue is tearing us apart. All I did was vote against a flag once, and it was everybody else saying that I was the un-American one. I am not an American. My father was a firefighter. I can tell you up... My father was firefighter. I can tell you up to these stories about my grandparents and what they did for this country. But I'm not going to bore you with stories. This country means a lot to me. I have done more things in my life, just rising up, the same with all of the other counselors here. But I am not an American. I am just doing what I feel is right. So yeah, I'm going to vote yes, so we can move past this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from council?
Yeah.
Counselor Shonbell?
I'm very torn, you probably all know, by this whole issue. I consider myself American, otherwise I probably would not even be sitting on this dais. I I really do honor our flag. That was my concern during the last application. And I honor the fact that so many of you in this room have fought so that I can have the privilege of being a free person here. I mean, that's you can't put a price on that. And you can't put a price on whatever losses you may have incurred within that. And some of those losses may not show physically, but they may be there. I also worry about the message of the intent. Because some of this has been so hard, and I do not know how I am going to vote. I would love to say I'm going to vote yes. I am completely torn by this. And I leave it at that.
Counselor Hemmerich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank, thank, thank you to everyone who's spoken tonight. I think this is a a really good conversation for the community to have. I really appreciate it.
Counselor Hemmerich, I'm sorry, could you speak up?
Oh, yeah. I appreciate everybody that turned out and spoke up tonight. I just want to say I don't have any issues with Mr. Judd's personality. And although I disagree with his partisan politics, that, that's not really fundamentally what I was concerned about. You know, I'm fundamentally concerned about statements of, you know, that celebrate the theft of laptops of the Speaker of the House.
Jake, can you try and go a little higher in volume?
Can, is it, does this work, Mr. Mayor?
That's a little bit better, yes.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you, I, 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 I think it, it brings shame on our country to celebrate, for anybody to celebrate the theft of laptops from the Speaker of the House or the President of the Senate or to call a vice president treasonous for fulfilling his constitutional duties. And it, it's, it's really about, that's really about our democracy and it's about whether or not you're going to stand up for our democracy. And I'm so proud of all the veterans that have stood up for our democracy, for, for my grandfathers and for my great uncles and for my grandma that worked at Wright Patterson Air Force Base, writing letters to orphans, of which my grandfather was one. You know, and right after 9/11, I, I, I went to sign up to serve. I was not accepted because I have asthma. And, but I have immense respect for the people who served. But, but serious concerns about people who aren't willing to stand up for our nation and who are willing to celebrate the compromise of our national security. And, and I think this council was right to have some concerns and to struggle over that. And we're at a, we're at a trying time in our nation. I think back to Abraham's Getty, Abraham Lincoln's Gettysburg Address, and he said, we're engaged in a great civil war. And, and sometimes it feels like that right now, testing whether our nation or any nation so conceived and so dedicated can long endure. And, and I think that's the unfinished work that we all have to do to hold this nation together. And I, I, I will be happy to vote yes tonight. And I also, I think this, this chat, side chat, this isn't a meeting. The chat should not be, you know, a second meeting. I think we have rules of procedures, and I would politely ask that 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 not go on, that if you have something to say, to speak up.
Okay, so counsel, any other comments? There is a motion on the floor.
Second.
It's been made and seconded. Okay, seeing no other comments. All those in favor of the application, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, thank you very much. So the flag discussion is over. The motion has passed. Counsel?
I'd be fine with that.
Okay, come on up.
All right. Bernie. You know, thanks. I took the hat off because I'm talking as me, myself, and I, and a veteran. I signed on the dotted line to join the Guards to honor what that flag means. To me, First Amendment, Second Amendment, they're written in stone. They're part of our constitution. It's, it's all right if we disagree. That's what makes this country great. We can disagree, have a conversation, and drive on. And I appreciate everybody flying the flag. Like, have a conversation, and if we have something like this, again, the very area Veterans Council has always worked great with the city of Bay Harbor, always. We've done stand downs. We've done Boy Scouts parades. City Park, we're always in front of the youth triumphant every Memorial Day, every Veterans Day. By the way, we're having ceremony if anybody would like to join us. Any, anything that we, we want to do as our veteran organizations, you guys have stood behind us, and I appreciate you guys moving forward with this. It's, as, as a veteran, it's very important to me that everybody expresses their ideas, their concerns, and their worries, and afterwards, we'll have a beverage, discuss it more, or do whatever. I tell my kids this when they were growing up. You're not going to make 100% of the people happy 100% of the time, so do the best you can. Thank you. I appreciate your support tonight.
Thank you. So counsel, for a discussion at a later time, I did send out all the agendas. I know that there's concern about making sure that people were aware of things coming up and they knew what was coming up. So I have placed all of the council priorities on those agendas. So if anybody wants to go and look through those, they can see those as they come up. The reason why I bring that up is just because of the flag policy. If that is something that anybody wants to address any sooner, please let me know. We've noted that there's been several deficiencies, and one of them is there's really no timeframe that says you must admit a certain number of days before this needs to be acted upon. I think that's part of the issue that has come up with the administration is they receive a request at the last minute. They're trying to do their due diligence, but then it comes forward quickly. And then in that manner, it makes it so it's rushed for council. So I'm going to suggest that we try to move that up a little bit to either we address it, or at least send it to a committee or do something so that we don't find ourselves in a position where we're addressing those last-minute conversations.
That sounds good.
So moving on, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we do have two hands raised. Don't know what the agenda topic is.
So Bernadette and Tom, are your hands just up by default or?
I'm intending, I'm, I would like to follow up with what Jake asked about the chat. You may not be following the chat, but there are so many disparaging remarks. Please take the chat down.
So I will make a comment right now, which is what we did during COVID. Anyone from this point forward, and I'll mark it down as 8:19. Anyone else who posts another remark that is disparaging in there, we will have you removed from council. And Counselor Wazizak, can you make sure? Okay, thank you. So counsel, we are on item 9C. This is the locker searches and inspection policy.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Judd is waving at the camera. I don't know how you want to proceed.
Yeah, no, I'm just, we've already had public comment. We've already
I've been waving, I've been waving my hand for quite a while. My hand raising button is not working.
So counsel, we have not heard from Mr. Judd. Mr. Judd, you have two minutes, just like everybody else was offered.
Mr. Judd's video appears to be frozen.
Thank you. Is it frozen? Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. I would suggest that you turn off the camera as the audio is better.
Okay, so turn off the camera. How's that? Is that better?
I can barely hear you, but
Can you hear me?
We'll start two minutes starting now, and if I have to cut you off, it's because the two minutes is up. Go ahead.
Can you hear? Okay, can you hear me?
You are cutting in and out.
Can you hear me? Can somebody say they can hear me or not?
Mr. Judd, you are cutting in and out quite a bit.
Thank you. Um, I just, I want to, two things I want. Okay, so any, any suggestions how to correct this?
I would suggest that you try calling into the phone number, and we can offer you time later on in the agenda. So counsel, I'm going to move on if nobody is opposed. We'll move on to item 9C, which is the locker searches and inspection policy. Rick, are you on there?
Loz on has had his hand up for quite some time.
Yes, Tom has already spoke. So we took all the public comment. Everyone was offered enough equal opportunity. Rick, are you on there?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Hey, so do you want to give us an overview of the locker searches and inspections policy since the last time we spoke about it?
So I went back, met with Chief Bombardier, who's now retired. We reviewed the documents, didn't really see anything that changed the policy other than the, the little minor tweaks to make them, to make the policy gender neutral and to allow other outside law enforcement agencies to do a locker search or an inspection with probable cause or in the investigation of a crime. And so I then forwarded on to our labor attorney, Scott Cameron. He agreed that the policy was within the scope of the law. And so I'm bringing it back for the council to approve.
Okay, is there any questions on the policy? We did send it back just to make sure that it was given that second review. And if there's no questions, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'm back. Can I, can I speak for one minute? I just need one.
Brian, we're going to wait until the end of the meeting. We're in the middle of other business.
I just need one minute. That's all I need.
But you're, you will have to wait, sir. So the motion is made and seconded. Is there a discussion on the policy? And I think I saw Michael's hands up.
No, I was just, I was going to make a funny comment about Rick's background, but
Okay. Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 9D, this is the FY '22 quarter one overview. Dawn?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Um, so in your packet, it was sent for the financial status update for Q1, which is July through September for fiscal year '22. Excuse me.
Dawn, can you speak a little bit or pull the microphone closer?
Sure, is that better?
I think so.
Okay. So the financial status update that I sent in the packet was for quarter one of fiscal year '22, July through September timeframe. That would be 25% complete, and we use that as our baseline for this review. The general fund revenues are at 33% complete of the budget with the expenditures coming in at 22%. So both are in the favorable position at this time. I identified several departments by highlighting them in yellow on your report that were currently running ahead of that baseline, but the majority of them were due to timing issues. Well, be that if we made a payment at the beginning of the year, it would skew the percentages just a little bit. Did anybody have any questions regarding the general fund?
So anyone on council have questions on the general fund numbers in the report? I don't see any, Dawn.
Okay, moving on to the enterprise funds. The water revenues are right on target at 25%, and the expenditures are below that at 16%. There was really nothing significant to note in that department. I would like to bring to your attention the sewer revenues that are running a bit behind that target at 20%, and that is attributable to the way we budgeted for Berry Town billing. And that is a formula function that's based on the wastewater treatment facility with a percentage of the BOD and flow calculations. So it's not going to be a straight, you know, 20% increase like we see with the the sewer rates that we increase every, or we increase this year. So that's why the sewer revenues are, are running a little bit below our budgeted target. But to offset that increase or the, the running behind that target, the expenditures are also below that baseline at 19%. I hope that makes sense.
That's me, but counsel? Are you? Counselor Hemmerich has his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dawn, for this overview. The, I had a question about the sludge disposal. If I recall right, there was, we were taking a lot of free sludge from other municipalities like Northfield. That's no longer the case, right?
So could you speak up?
Yeah, Counselor Hemmerich is asking about the sludge disposal. We were taking in sludge, I believe it was from Northfield. The remedy was to see about getting a payment for the disposal of the sludge in that location.
Yeah, we, we I don't believe we were ever taking it for free to the extent that that was said at the time. I think it was a misstatement. We've always gotten a fee from Northfield, to the best of my knowledge.
And I have one question. Sorry to go back to the general fund, but I notice it looks like we're trending below the target percentage. And I was curious, is it, is it looking like there's going to be a large surplus again this fiscal year? And if so, would that be based on certain staff vacancies or what, what really was driving the the surplus last year and what could potentially be driving it again this year?
So, sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dawn. Go ahead.
So it's really too early for me to predict where we're going to end up this year. I'll know better. Usually, when I give my December report, Q2, I come with a better prediction. But even then, it's, it can be a shot in the dark. But speaking to '21, that was a combination of things. We had received federal funding and, and through the state funding, like grants, COVID reimbursements, items like that that added to the surplus. We also, as a department collective, we knew going into it that we had to cut costs. So we the staff was furloughed, you know, and through, I think they came back in August. We saw significant savings in our fuel prices because of COVID. There was just a plethora of things. And I'd be happy to come back to the council and give a more detailed update on the fiscal '21 after the audit is complete, which our auditors will be coming to speak to the council, I hope, mid-December as well. So maybe that would be a good time to give you a more, more formal update on where those surpluses derive from.
Thank you for that explanation, Dawn. And part of my curiosity is just knowing, you know, if there are, you know, what's driving that surplus and if it could inform pieces of this year's budget or this next year's budget and also trends that you're seeing this could inform, um, pieces of, of this year's budget or this next year's budget, um, and also trends that you're seeing, uh, this.
Sure, understood.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
So I, I would just echo what, in part, what Don said. It's, uh, at the end of the first quarters, it's way premature to be making any kind of projections, good or bad for that matter. Um, and quite frankly, it's probably not into the third quarter that we, uh, that there's sufficient trending to try to predict a year-end landing, and I found from experience that's extremely difficult to do. Uh, but we do the best we can. Uh, vacancy savings, uh, play a role every year. Uh, and we're plagued with more vacancy savings right now, uh, than, uh, than usual, uh, because of COVID and the whole employment and labor market. Um, tho- so those, those are always a factor, uh, this year probably more so than, than ever. But, um, I look at this, um, financial report. I always go holistically to the bottom line. I try to look at where the revenues are to the point in time that we, we are in the, in the budget season. And then I look at the relativity of the bottom line of expenditures to, uh, revenues. Um, and it's li- and here we have a, a comfortable, um, relationship. We're twenty-two expend, twenty-two percent expended on expenditures compared to being twenty-five percent of the way through the quarter. So we're on the right side. Uh, revenues are running a little high, but I think as Tom, uh, Don said, that's timing. Uh, so I'm, I'm reasonably comfortable with the first quarter prognosis. It's where I would hope and expect to be. Um, and we'll continue to watch it going forward.
Any other questions from counsel? Don, is there anything else you wanted to present?
Nope, that's all I had.
Okay, the, the other question I had, and this is, it's not really related to the quarter one, uh, is more to the health of the water and sewer fund. So for not, not for tonight, but just a question for the future. We did make some changes to our water and sewer rates, and we have that scheduled in place. And, uh, if we can just get a, uh, indication when we will become whole in those funds again. Um, and again, if you want, just send that out as an email to everybody so that everybody's aware.
Oh, sure, I could do that.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions?
No, I just, thank you for this memo. It is very easy to read.
Yes.
With the highlights. I just very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for the comment.
Okay, counsel, moving on then, we'll go to item nine E. This is the FY twenty-three general fund proposal presentation. And Steve, I'll turn that one over to you.
Sure, um, so, uh, by presenting this to the council tonight, uh, I'm meeting my charter obligation for the manager to present the, a general fund budget proposal to the council. Uh, it's not my intent to go through it in detail this evening. Uh, it's really to, um, this, uh, complete the formality of presenting it, giving you a brief overview, um, and then I know the mayor is going to be setting up, uh, either for the council meetings or budget workshops to, um, dig down into the budget. Uh, this represents the culmination of a process that probably started back in July at the administration level. Uh, and then back on September fourteenth, we made the first weekly or bi-weekly department presentations, um, allowing the counselors to have a, uh, more in-depth review on a department-by-department basis of, of the budget development. I, I, I'm pleased to, to report that, um, this is being presented on the schedule that I established back in October. Um, and, uh, and again, meeting the charter requirement. Um, I tried to present a very comprehensive proposal that had the cover narrative, the actual budget sheet, which had four elements to it. The capital revenue budgeting summary, which you had, uh, seen before, but presented again as part of this complete package. The meter program, financial analysis, which had been asked for before. Um, I just re, re-presented, if you will, the fiscal year twenty-one fund balance utilization suggestions or wish list, uh, with, uh, with the action status that the council had taken, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and also the capital equipment plan. Um, just be briefly speaking to the, to the budget itself. Uh, the proposal presented herein is a thirteen million, four hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and forty-four thousand dollar budget proposal, uh, of which nine million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars is proposed to be raised by taxes. As it stands right now, at this stage, that represents a fiscal year twenty-three municipal tax rate of two dollars and six cents, uh, per hundred dollars of valuation. Uh, this results in a projected tax rate increase of four point two six percent. Now, uh, that sounds high to all of us. Uh, I know that's not where we're gonna end up. Uh, but by, uh, on a relative basis, that's probably at the low end of the range of budget proposals at this time of the year and previous years. Um, so while there's a, a fair amount of work ahead, uh, the challenge isn't quite as daunting as, uh, it has been in past years. And that's also reflective of, we have a very significant, um, staff, um, uh, proposals of adding four positions, uh, to the, um, to the budget, to the, to the staffing to address areas of, uh, lack of depth, if you will, um, uh, up to this point in time. Uh, it's up to the council to decide, uh, which of those positions or how many of those positions survive. Um, but, um, that's part of that budgeting process. Um, I think with that, well, um, I, I tried to give you, uh, a fair amount of detail in the narrative as to what those positions cost, not only in absolute dollars, but as a relative percentage of the tax rate increase. I tried to summarize the significant, um, single line, uh, new items, if you will, new or increased items, so that you, it would make your, your budget review somewhat easier. Um, and, uh, I closed by saying there, there are at least a couple of mechanisms that, um, uh, may be possible to help, um, rate, uh, reduce the tax rate increase aside to any adjustments or cuts, if you will, that the council may make. Uh, the first is, uh, ambulance revenue. And in my memo, I captioned it, uh, ambulance revenge. We don't have aggressive ambulances. Um, they aren't out on attack. It's ambulance revenue, not ambulance revenge. Um, we were, tried to be conservative and budgeted the, uh, ambulance revenue at about four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, tracked to about five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars last year. Um, it's too, as I, we said earlier, it's too earlier, too early in the year to, um, consider tweaking that number. Um, it's not that it can't go down, but, uh, depending on what we see for trending, uh, in December, maybe as late as this January, depending on the council's schedule, uh, we might be able to tweak that up. Excuse me, um, tweak that upward a little bit by maybe fifteen thousand dollars, which helps, um, but that remains to be seen. And then the other, uh, suggestion, which I feel obligated to present, and I know it, uh, has evokes mixed responses, uh, but the, um, possibility of using a hundred thousand dollars of the fiscal year twenty-one fund balance to, uh, quote-unquote, buy down, uh, the tax rate increase. I know that's not sustainable. It's a one-time infusion of funds. Um, but nonetheless, it's an option, uh, particularly in light of the significant staff improvements we're trying to make. So, uh, uh, I, I feel obligated to put it on the table so the counselors consider that and decide how they want to proceed. And with that, I'll, I'll, I'll entertain some questions, but again, I, I, it wasn't my intent to go into a, a very detailed presentation.
So just to set the stage a little bit too, counsel, I had asked that if, uh, you did have anything else new, um, or for consideration that we address it so that we can have time for the staff to go through those items in order to present to us when we have, uh, but those budget workshops. So, um, Counselor Wazza, Zach, your hand went up.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just going, uh, it has nothing to do with what you just said. So I don't, I just.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure first. Uh, so basically, you know, this is what, um, the, the budget's the manager's budget. We're here making comments because in the end, whatever the manager proposes to us, we're going to ultimately either, uh, vote for or not. So he has presented based on his, uh, conversations with department heads. Uh, we have all the information that's been provided from them. We've had the presentations from each department head leading up to this meeting. So the question really is, is there anything else that we have not discussed that's not here that any counselor would like to bring up? Counselor Booton?
No, I apologize. I didn't pu- put down my hand. It's not new. I just wanted to make a comment about the surplus and how I would support, uh, the manager's recommendation to that, buy down, uh, the budget.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm.
Just as a side note, and just as a side note, Berry City originally required that, for those that don't have the history of knowing that charter language. And we specifically changed it so that we could have a, a fund ba- uh, fund to drag into the next year for, uh, you know, concerns and issues of, you know, an emergency fund. However, it, it was there and it was there for decades. So I, I would just, I would support that buy-down option. Not that it was a recommendation, the option.
Yeah, Counselor Wazza, Zach, and I'm sorry, I think you took your thunder, huh?
No, I feel, oh, no, I was just gonna say what I, I think Steve is about to say, which is that technically in the memo, there was not a direct recommendation from the manager on the survey. So I just wanted, that's all I want. I'm not weighing in for or against it. I'm just clarifying that for the record, that there was no technical recommendation. He's just putting it as an option was my understanding of the narrative.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm, I'm kinda jumping in front of, uh, Counsel Hammer, but, um, why, what I, what I want, what I wanted to cast, uh, to, to say is that I, I, that's a, that's, uh, an item of discussion in a, in a future workshop. I was, I was not anticipating or encouraging counsel to get into a discussion of that item tonight, because it, I think it will evoke some discussion.
And then Counselor Hammerack and then Counselor Stockwell.
Uh, thank you, Mary, and thank you, thank you, Steve and Don for all the work on this. Um, the, for the next step for the workshop, so you're saying, Mr. Mayor, that we, really, we should, any, any final questions we should be asking now and not, not reserving for the workshop? Is that, is that the intent?
So the intent for the workshop is so that we can have our answers. Um, so if you have questions now, like, uh, I would also like to add, uh, a zoo. I don't know. It's just anything that's out there.
I would love a Ferris wheel. No, I'm, I'm kidding.
Intent is because there's only gonna be so much time for staff to research any of those other items. So, you know, something will come up. Something always does, but it really is try to limit that scope as much as possible so that we're focusing on what's in front of us, and we can have those conversations on what do we keep and what don't we?
Yeah, well, so, and so I do have a, a couple, couple, uh, a couple of questions on the list that came up to me as I was looking at this over the weekend. And one was, I was, do we provide a buyout if people go on their spouse's insurance?
Yes, we do. We provide, um, I, it's either, uh, actually, if Rick is still on, he can probably tell you, but it's either a thousand or a three thousand dollar stipend.
Three thousand.
Three thousand dollar stipend put into their salary. We had to put in their salary because FLSA requires it to be calculated into overtime.
Are, are there any also bonuses for residency if, if, uh, if a staff member lives in Berry City and has a home-based taxes? Um, there's nothing like that?
No.
I know, know, like, sign-on bonuses for people that would, um, that would be hired to, that if they're located in the city in six months?
Well, not, not, no, but I will report, excuse me, in my manager's report this weekend that, um, just today I had arranged for a, um, working session, if you will, with our labor attorney and three or four of the affected department heads about, uh, recruitment retention, uh, strategies, uh, which we still have to work through. It was a good discussion, but in this environment, um, uh, hiring is just, uh, just a horrendous challenge. But, um, there's no, uh, there's no, um, requirement that some, or no requirement or no bonus that somebody, uh, live in the city, except that there is in the charter, a requirement with a, with a, with an escape clause, I guess you will, but there is a requirement that the manager live in the city.
Um, and by default, because the city clerk is elected, um, I believe the clerk is also a city resident.
Thanks, Neil.
Uh, the, the thing that I forgot to ask about is that I've learned that, or, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the public works crews have no way of communicating back with the central office. There's no radio system or phone system, um, that once they get their orders for the day, there's no, there's no a, a way to communicate. Is that, is that the case?
No, I don't think that's true. I'm not sure that everybody has a radio, but I'm sure somebody on the crews has a radio. I mean, I'd have to have Bill speak to that, but I, I don't believe that's correct.
Okay. All of the trucks are equipped with radios, um, and all of the foremen, and then I'm not positive on work leaders, but the foremen have city cell phones. But I know that there was some issues with the, um, the radio communications company after, um, Rinker's Communications sold. We've been working through some, um, I know Bill's working on a strategy to replace with more modern equipment that works better. There were a lot of dead spots for the radios within the city limits.
Oh, so think of it as our conversation with, um, CVPSA, but not of as large. It would be a smaller footprint that those radios are trying to reach. And the other side of that is if you're down in a, a ditch, you're not checking your cellphone. So, um, there are times where even if the staff did have access, they're not gonna be able to access. Um, I won't speak too much further on it, but Bill might be able to provide a little more detail on if there are issues in those communications back and forth.
And I, I have six more questions, so maybe I should just fol- I should follow up with an email, but I was curious, what, how did you come up with a four, the four or five percent budget increase target?
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't have a five percent budget increase target. What, what I reported is what the budget proposal, um, as it stands, results in a projected four point two percent, a four point two six percent increase. And that, that you will see calculated on what I call the money sheet, uh, the second sheet inside the budget proposal package.
Yeah, but I meant like the change in expenses from the previous year is five, five point oh six percent. And I, I was just curious if there was, you know, when you were talking about what, what type of increase, was there any, there was any target or, or was it just whatever the needs were and what they added up to?
I, 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 I guess I'm still not clear of the question. I don't know the, I don't know what number you're referring to, five point oh six?
Uh, the change in expenses from the previous year is a percent?
Can you tell me where you, you're sho- you're seeing that number?
Uh, it's the additional budget statistics page. Um, that's not helpful.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, wait a second. Is that page four? Is that in, in the narrative, Counselor?
Uh, no, it's in, it's in a, it's in a supplemental sheet after the, um, tax rate calculation sheet, but you know, I'm not sure if it's in the packet or if it's in my budget binder. It may not be in the packet, actually.
Well, it should, well, well, the current version of that sheet.
Oh, it's right after the money sheet, Steve. Page forty-three in the packet.
In the digital packet.
In the digital packet, page forty-three. Um, the projected tax rate calculation for fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Uh, additional budget statistics. It is the third item down.
Yeah, uh, I got, I'm sorry, I have a hard copy here, but I, I guess I didn't print that page out. Let me, if you give me a second, I'll go to the packet.
So Steve, what you're referring to is, um, the, the summary sheet, you know, where it has our, uh, the draft up on the top left-hand side. It would actually read page forty-two. Uh, should be printed on it. Um, that's the one that will show what we normally present as part of the presentation to the public. It has the inflation rate. So the next sheet after that is the, the one that they're discussing.
Yeah, that, the, what puzzles me is, is the next sheet after that. I'm trying to. what puzzles me is, is the next sheet after that. I'm trying to, so I'm almost there.
Well, you know, maybe, maybe I'm asking the wrong question, Steve, um, because it sounds like, well, your, your focus in building the budget was really around the percent tax rate increase, um, but that's based.
Oh, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay. I, I think all, that all that is is a mathematical comparison of fiscal year, uh, fiscal year 23, the proposed to 22. And I think if you go into the budget detail sheets, if you look at the bottom of the columns, you'll see that same number. It, it's just a relative. It's a, just a math equation.
But I, so I guess the question, did you, when you put the budget together, did you have a target percentage in mind? And if so, I was just curious, what, what was the reasoning for, for percentage? It sounds like it's not the case.
Yeah, well, it's not the case, but let me explain. The approach that I take with the staff to put, to put the budget together is to try to uh, try to minimize year-over-year increase. Um, two-thirds of the budget is driven by things that we have little control over. I mean, wages, I mean, we have control over wages, but they're negotiated when you have a contract. Those increases are fixed. Um, uh, all of the insurances, uh, you know, and salaries, uh, and then, and the benefits and so on. So two-thirds of the budget is driven by factors that we have relatively little control over. We make our best judgments based on historical analysis of individual line items, whether, whether we've uh, don't need to budget quite as much as we have in previous years, or we find that we, to be realistic, we need to be higher. And I, I try to take a prudently conservative approach to developing the budget. Meaning try to air a little bit on the high side, but not so wildly so that it drives an unrealistic budget. Uh, or you, or you can't help but be right. And then, and then there are, there are items which I listed and there, I don't know, there might be 20 items in about a 700 line budget that are, that are either notable cost increases year-over-year that are beyond our control, increases in vendor licenses, things like that. Um, or new items, new individual line items that have been put in the budget, uh, which we've reviewed on a department, but department basis, but which I tried to summarize in the packet so that um, you had a very explicit, very transparent indication of where the cost increases were or are. But, so the target, I, I have no, I mean, the, the target, if you will, I know counsel in the past has generally said, gee, we'd like to get to 2% as would I. Um, any, anytime we, if we can get to three, I don't think that's unreasonable. I understand it could be higher than some folks like. But if we could get to three or very close to three, and I think last year it might've been 3.11, if I'm not mistaken. So if I have an intuitive target, it's three or less. But we don't, we don't build the budget trying to hit a specific number other than trying to be as low as we can.
So Jake, to follow up on that a little bit more, so when we've mentioned 2% before, if you took the average increases over the last five years, it's about 2% and that's below the rate of inflation over that same time period. This year inflation's higher. So when you look at that summary sheet, you're going to see those numbers and we've compared those just so that we have an indication. What is it going to cost for anybody else that's out there on everything else that's going up? So we know, we should never try to go above what the rate of inflation is because it's, it's a good number to, to compare to. So, um, social security benefits, I think this is the first time it's gone up in quite some time. Uh, so it is a adjustment that I think is necessary. Uh, what's relevant there is we have a lot of people that are on those fixed incomes. So we also don't want to make, go over what their adjustment is, is to. So, um, we need to understand their ability to pay. So along with that is then the discussion of you might have the ability to pay, but what, what do you really want to have, right? So when you're looking at our budget as a whole, there, there are the services that people already expect. It's been there time in, time out. And that's why the question comes up of, is there anything that this council wants to see removed from the services that we provide? Uh, and usually the answer is no. Because those are the services that we've been providing and, and the residents like them. And then the, the follow-up question is, is there anything additional that we want to see added? And I think that's where it comes in, where those four positions are. That's a balance between what's the, the benefit to the resident versus what's the benefit to the, the city? Um, so for example, the DPW Assistant Director position, would that have an impact on those things that we heard tonight, like the Transportation Advisory Committee, you've heard there? If there was another bill, would we be able to get twice as much work done? Especially since the infrastructure bill was just passed and we're going to be seeing some funds come in. Is that an opportunity for that position to uh, go offer the grant funding to manage some of those projects and to see those things through? So I think those are the conversations that we'll get into in more detail once we have those budget meetings. Counselor Stockwell and then Counselor Booton.
I was wondering if we could look at long-term trends. Well, not really long-term, like three to five years. Could you like take BOR in particular? And say, okay, here's the expenditures and here's the revenue over three to five years. So we could look at what the trend is. Does it pay for itself? Is that getting better? Is it getting worse? Considering that 21 was kind of a wipeout, but you should be able to see a trend if you look at five years, correct? Now it'd be an easy way to say, okay, this, this is a service we're providing. It isn't paying for itself. What should we do? And maybe take some of the other you know, sort of bigger expenses, maybe not paying for themselves programs and look at them like that. Is that possible? And the BOR seems simple, like a simple place to start.
That is possible. And Steve, I think what Jeff has provided in the past, if we can just tack on another year onto it, we'd be able to see what that additional revenue.
Yeah, we've, I mean, I've, I've worked with, uh, with Jeff and now in the last couple of years with Dawn to provide analyses of the, um, of the cost of operations. Um, I think if you, um, I think the Civic Center is, is not the white elephant that everybody thinks it is, uh, except for when you have the emergency expenses, uh, like compressors and, and, and whatever. That changes the picture a little bit, uh, but I guess the other, um, you know, the council can do what it wants to do with the Civic Center complex, but uh, I think, uh, to, um, you know, there, there's probably, I'm not sure there's any municipal service that's provided that is a revenue generator. I mean, a profit maker. Um, uh, and, and for all intensive purposes, the nature of government is to provide services that uh, the residents or taxpayers want and need and request. Um, so, um, I think we try to get the Civic Center complex as close to a break even operation as we can, uh, but I think, uh, I'm just not sure how realistic it is to think it's going to be a moneymaker. But we can provide those at least historical, um, assessments and, um, do the best projection we can, but projections are based an awful lot on assumptions, of course.
Thank you.
Counselor Booton?
Yeah, um, I'll just follow up with the, the Civic Center question. It's one of those things where the community as a whole um, looks at that as a, as a huge asset for us. Um, I know that, you know, for voting purposes, it's very useful. I, I think that as a community, I don't know if there's much we could do with the Civic Center. Certainly not something that we could deal with in the time before the budget. However, it's not, not a bad idea to look into that again. I know that we've had a counselor in prior years that that was concerned about that regarding the percentage, um, for the budget, you know, we've, we've had, and historically speaking, the, the support for a percentage increase has between, you know, everybody loves 1% and then, you know, there's 2% where people are like, okay, 3%, they're like, okay. And then usually four, five, six, the six is a no. I mean, uh, nobody ever supports six. Um, but it starts to taper off at like two and a half to, to 4%. At the, 4% would be the max, which gets back to, you know, buying down the budget.
Well, I don't, I don't, I, I, I'm not sure that again, to, to the extent that I've thrown out the, the buy down option, um, I mean, I don't, I don't think it, it's a way to help. It might be an easy way to help. I'm not suggesting that's the only way or that has to be done. As manager, um, I think if we can get to a 3%, uh, if we could get to 3% or under, I think that's a very responsible, very credible budget. Uh, you start going to two, um, and uh, it, it, um, I think that that begets very challenging. And to, uh, I, I think there are ways to get to three. It's just going to have to be you know, the result of deliberations by the council. And going back to a question that Counselor Hammer asked earlier, um, I, I and the staff are more than willing to answer spontaneous questions at any budget session. But to the extent that we can get questions before a session, it's just that much more helpful that we're not, um, uh, we're not reacting spontaneously to something that might need a little research. Uh, quite frankly, that, uh, for those of you who have been on the budget workshops the last couple of years, um, having Dawn at the workshop with instant access to financial data um, uh, has just proved, uh, incredibly, um, I think satisfying to be able to answer those questions spontaneously. Not every question, but the more uh, the bulk of them, we can answer right on the spot. And the, and to the extent that we can have a preview of questions, it just means uh, we can come to those budget sessions with answers. And it makes the budget sessions that much more efficient.
So Counselor Wazak did have his hand up.
Yes, um, so just one comment and then one, it, it is a specific question, but I'm not trying to get too granular here. I'm just trying to understand the question. Um, under City Hall maintenance, there is a new line item 342 for new maintenance. Um, total comp allowance, including benefits. So that is a, that's a position, right? Like that's a.
That's a custodial position. Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. I just wanted to.
That's one of the four.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Awesome. I just wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly. Um, and then the comment is that I have, I, I don't have anything else to add. I think this budget proposal incorporates the positions that staff has been asking for, uh, for a while, and I very much appreciate the inclusion of $8,000 for committee funding, uh, which is something, a lot of the committees have been asking for some funds available to them if they want to do their own projects or whatever. So I very much appreciate having, uh, that line item in there as well. So thank you for that.
Any other questions? Counselor, Counselor Hammerack?
Yeah, to Counselor Stockwell's point, I, I kind of think that having seen some trend line, uh, at least for um, the grand list, like what's the trend line for the grand list? Now I might be able to, something that could be pulled from the, the workshop that happened. Um, when debt retirement is gonna, um, occur, particularly any tip debt retirement. And then the trend lines for known, um, staffing levels. Um, uh, for instance, like when we have to start picking up the cost of that grant funded, the grant funded police officers. So when, it'd be nice to know if, if in two years are the, is there going to be a big spike here? Um, or, uh, an opportunity because there's significant debt retirement and, and, and just thinking back to, I know Counselor Booton has really emphasized, um, trying to find efficiencies that would make the government more, um, just, uh, make staff load a little bit less. Uh, Rich Mori had mentioned that, you know, past councils have talked about, can we, can we look at the recreation enterprise in a different way? And, and I know my, my interest has really been on community development and thinking about are there opportunities to grow the grand list to increase the capacity to provide services without um, additional increases in the, in the, the, the tax rate? Um, and I know that those are kind of bigger discussions that we, we haven't, really haven't had a chance to talk about, but you know, it gets to this point where each year there's a, there's a budget and at, at what point, where's the space where you get to talk about the big issues about, you know, would a grant writing position um, pay for itself? Do we need to be thinking about staff capacity right now for, um, an ARPA coordinator or assistant city manager or strategic projects manager to scale up and be able to manage infrastructure projects or whatever that council is gonna, um, allocate ARPA, ARPA to. And, um, so if this is, if this is the moment, then I think then I'd like to talk about it, but if, if it's not the moment, then I think the workshop seems like the right space to start thinking about. Does this, uh, budget, uh, solve the greatest challenges and, and and longstanding challenges that the city's talked about related to recreation enterprise and efficiency and grant writing and community development?
Well, this, this, so the answer is basically no. I mean, those are more global holistic questions that that go beyond the preparation of this budget. Um, uh, to the extent that you speak about a grant writer, um, one of the positions that we're, we're advocating for is a junior planner. Um, a grant writing, um, would certainly fall within a planner's, uh, job description as, but frankly, I mean, every one of our department heads are grant writers. Um, so I, I'd love to, I'd love to budget for a grant writer position, but that's what are you talking, another 40, 50, $60,000 by the time you get done benefits on top of the four positions you, you are, that are in the budget already. So, uh, they're, they're awful difficult questions, but they usually end up exacerbating the budget. So, I mean, historically, we try to the administration advocates, advocates for, um, trying to right-size the staff and increasing the staff capabilities balanced by the council. Uh, you know, what's acceptable to the council and obviously ultimately the, the, uh, the voters. Uh, you know, I, you've heard me say it before, but it took three budget proposals to get the finance position, uh, finance director's position funded and in place. And we've needed it not only since I got here, but before I got here. Um, so those, those are the, those are the budgeting challenges that go along with um, trying to, to undertake some of these other initiatives, which I don't think anybody disagrees that, that we couldn't use or we don't need. It's just, how do we pay for it all?
So Steve, let me ask that and answer it in a slightly different way. So as we're looking at the positions, I think we need to prioritize what we think is the most important out of what's listed. And if one of the considerations is that that planning position is going to assist with grant writing, is there in a revenue side of this that we could also be including within the, the conversation? So how much money would they be able to bring in to pay for themselves? So if that's something you, you want to, if that's a question Counselor Hammerack has, then that's something that we can have brought back as an answer at one of those workshops.
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't think you can, I, I, I think intuitively you could say, if you had a, if you had a position that was principally charged with writing grants, uh, and let's just say that position costs $50,000. I think the odds are that, uh, there would be sufficient grants written in the course of a year that would uh, pay for that $50,000. Quite frankly, whether they were written by the, by, by the successful grant was written by the grant writer or not. But the, 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 the impossibility is that you, we can easily say, we'll, we'll have a grant writer or we'll have a staff position uh, with a, with a significant responsibility of writing grants, but there's no way in heck we can predict uh, specifically, uh, what grants will be available, which ones will apply for, and which ones will be successful for. So um, other than intuitively saying, um, I'm sure that we would grant, get enough grant money uh, to, um, offset the cost of a grant writer. But then, but much of that grant, grant revenue doesn't go to operations. It goes to specific projects or whatever, which, which are, uh, which are either in the capital uh, uh, specific projects or frankly, equipment purchases. So those are in the, uh, capital equipment plan, which we have in the capital improvements plans, which we will develop within the next year. Um, so a lot of the grant revenue doesn't go to operations. I'd say a very little percentage of it does.
So in your other question, Counselor Hammerack, with the ARPA funds, I mean, that's a different fund altogether. So if council did want So in your other question councillor Hemmerich, with the ARPA funds, I mean, that's a different fund altogether. So if council did want to. Hire a consultant for a limited time period, call it two years, and that position assisted staff and the oversight. That's something that council could, uh, cause I believe it's a, a cost that you can utilize from the ARPA funds. So.
That's a, that's a legitimate ARPA expense. Oh, I shouldn't say legitimate. It's ineligible. ARPA expense.
Don?
I would just like to add about the, um, grant is, Steve is correct, you know, most of the. Grant funds go to, um, a different fund to be managed. But there's usually a grant match. So you would not only be funding for a grant writer, you would also have to fund for a grant match. And which historically has come out of the operating fund.
Councillor Hemmerich?
And Mr. Mayor, I could clarify, I'm just kind of using that as an example of, um, if we're. Building a budget around goals, um, at what point are we gonna talk about, um, some of our goals? And, and I think particularly those revenue opportunities, whether it be, uh, recreation enterprise funds, really maximizing. A grant community development program and, um. Uh, and, and setting ourselves up for, uh, to make the most of, um, the, the ARPA. Funds, which will take staff project management, um, to be able to, to world those out. And we're looking at a new infrastructure bill, which is, uh, you know, I think to some extent makes the case for, uh, the public works positions, but. Um, but, you know, when we build our household budget, of course, there's costs we have to meet. Um, we made goals though for the discretionary spending. So, uh. Is tonight the night that we're gonna start talking about our budget goals or is that the workshop?
Well, so when you talk about co- goals, there's a couple of things there. One, uh, when we're talking about the strategic plan and the overall goals and planning process. This council did start that process. It, this council decided to go out for an RFP. I believe it's on the next agenda where that RFP is to be listed for that to go out. By the time that gets back, it's gonna be most likely after this process that we're doing this year. So. Those goals, those strategic planning pieces would be something for the next council. And I think that was mentioned previously too. Um, as for goals for the budget, we gotta define what that is. So are you talking about a percentage increase? Are you talk, what, what type of goal? On a budget, which is a numbers based item, uh, would you be looking for? And if that is. Um, we only add two positions or we only do some metric based on what we currently have for information. Uh, that's something that we can set either tonight or at one of those budget meetings.
Oh, sorry, I'm counting now.
Okay. So, you know, we have a couple of positions that are in here that, uh, they've been recommended by both the manager and by, uh, the department heads. And really, it's what ones do council feel, uh, should stay, you know, if any. And, uh, if our priority is to, uh, stick with the IT position because we know that Rick is doing two jobs right now. Or if we're looking to the future for either that planning position or the DPW position. And then there's also the obligations contractually, I believe, for the cleaning of different spaces. So. Um, those are all things that we need to bring up. The, the last thing I, I will add in here though is if not the hundred thousand added, I, I do still think that from that surplus fund. Uh, we do need to leave something in there just for the, the things that we don't know about. Uh, we've seen too many times at this council where we're at the last minute having something like a.
Roof.
A roof or this, well, the boiler is working really good right now, but at one point it wasn't. So those are the types of things that cost a lot of money and they're never budgeted, uh, because they're unbudgeted. They're, you know, emergency repairs. Um, and the other thing, and I think this might come up when, uh, councillor Stockwell and councillor Reel come back with some. Uh, options for our charter is, uh, a discussion on local options. Um, preliminary, we looked at the sales option, uh, that would bring in seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So if that's something that council wants to discuss, I mean, that's something on the revenue side. And cause right now we've been talking about the other, uh, piece of this. Um, and then the last thing on that surplus, I just wanna make sure that we do try to focus anything that we do expend are those one-time costs. So I would say that things like the, uh, any consultants that we've been looking into that's on that list. Those are one-time pieces, just like the strategic planning piece. That would be something that would work great with that surplus amount because it's only that one time and not an ongoing expense. Uh, so that could be part of that, that follow-up conversation that we need with surplus funds.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'm glad you mentioned that. So the, the wishlist, if you will, that I put in. This budget proposal has been modified since the first presentation. It, um, clearly indicates the, the four items that were approved by council. Um, I've, um, uh, and without remembering specifics, I guess what I would. Ask you to do is when you look at that, don't think it's the same one that you saw the first time. It's updated. Um, in an effort to help, uh, advance that discussion of, uh, what are appropriate uses for that? Fiscal, uh, twenty-one surplus.
And just to note, what, I'm sorry, just one last note, um, the, the tree guards that are on that list. The reason why I want those is because we're getting into the wintertime right now and that's when the plows run into the trees and destroy the trees. So if we can do anything now to prevent, uh, more damage to our assets, the better. So, you know, and I'm, I'm looking at it as a one-time expense. It's of course going to be, uh. Uh, expense in the way future, but those, uh, guards should be able to last for quite a few years once they're actually constructed and in place.
Yeah, we're, we're, um, um. I, I'm hopeful that within two weeks we can, um. Have a decision and a recommendation, the, the, the costs that we're looking at and what I'm not comfortable that I know well enough is. The quality of the, of the guards, but they're running anywhere from three hundred and fifty to maybe a thousand dollars apiece. Um, obviously the more expensive ones should be the more durable. The question is, is something less expensive as durable to withstand? Hits from plows and whatever, um, but, and depending on, depending on the cost, the twenty thousand dollars. Might buy them all, uh, or it might be the first of two or three installments on tree guards.
So any other comments on the budget? Hearing and seeing none. So thank you, Steve. Um, the last thing I do want council to review is our calendars. Uh, because we all sit on other committees and wear a lot of hats. So. Do we want to do a meeting on a Monday or Friday night, which appears to be the only, oh, weekday nights? Or do we want to set up a, a Saturday session in order to have some of these more in-depth conversations?
I personally will make a pitch, um, having, we've changed up the way we put together this budget in the past couple of years. Um, I found the Saturday morning sessions really helpful. I find that trying to crunch all of these numbers often after seven PM after a day of work, especially when you work with budgets in your day job. Can be difficult. Um, so I would push for some Saturday mornings. I like them. We bring coffee and donuts.
I actually agree. I think a Saturday is better because winter's coming and I don't know when you're gonna work late, you know?
So the, the first Saturday, uh, just looking around, any other comments? So the first Saturday is December fourth. Uh, is everybody willing to come in on eight o'clock on December fourth for that conversation?
For the record, they used to start at nine, but yes.
Nine, nine is an excellent hour.
Or nine o'clock, no. No.
December fourth.
Michael is saying no.
No, uh, that's the, uh, coin drop.
Oh, that is the coin drop. So how about, um, not a morning, but an afternoon?
That's fine too.
On the fourth, yeah, whenever.
So after the coin drop ends at noon, Michael?
Really? An afternoon? I mean, everybody's fresh in the morning and the afternoon.
Drunk already, Steve, huh?
Say again?
I don't think I.
Make your hundred thousand dollars if I can come to work.
Okay, I think that's enough.
Yeah, I don't know what that comment was. So, uh, if not the. Uh, fourth, how about the eleventh? If we're looking at Saturdays?
That is the one Saturday in December I cannot do.
Yeah.
Let's go with the fourth on the afternoon.
I think I'll be good, especially after being hyped up on coffee and standing out in the middle of a road all day.
A nice refreshing brisk coin drop to wake us up and then.
So, uh, we'll call it, uh, and i- if it's okay with everybody, just because there's a transfer of money that has to occur after the coin drop, uh, we call it twelve thirty?
The one o'clock, get lunch.
Or one o'clock?
One o'clock.
I don't see any objections. So one o'clock it is and we'll go until we're done. Uh, I would at least put in your calendar from one to four, just to make sure.
And Michael, when does the coin drop start again? Is it ten? I just don't remember. You're muted, sir.
It's eight.
It's eight.
It's not a, you have to come for all four hours or three hours or whatever it is. It's, you know, I, I mean, in the past, we've had people show up at like ten, ten thirty. Not a problem.
So in council, if there are any remaining questions, uh, what about Saturday, the eighteenth?
Yep.
Is there a certain time that might work on that day or is that day just not good?
It's not good. Well, let's start on the fourth.
Yeah, we'll start on the fourth. We'll go by there.
If we have to find a weeknight to get it done, that's what we'll do.
Okay. Okay, anything else for the FY twenty-three general fund proposal presentation in those dates? Anything else for discussion? Hearing and seeing none.
Is.
Michael?
Um, Tom still get his hand up from earlier or is that something new?
Um, do you have your hand up for something new or?
Uh, just to comment on the budget, Mayor, if I could, uh, can anyone attend the council working sessions?
They're open sessions, yes.
Oh, they are. Okay, fantastic. Uh, so, uh, I'll be there. Uh, Dawn, you've done a great job, uh, fantastic presentation. Um, Steve, I smile every time I see the money sheet. Uh, because that was something we developed, uh, twelve years ago. And, uh, it survived the test of time and I, I, I think fondly about the arguments that we had. In your office as you would present the money sheet and I would say, oh, no way. And we'd work hard to move it lower, you know, council to manage the expectations, uh. This year is going to be, first of all, I wanna thank you. I've really started paying attention. Uh, I guess I took a few years off and I've really started paying attention to what's going on in city government. And, uh, the budget and a lot of issues and I wanna thank you for that. So. Uh, but to manage the expectations, councillor Booton, you mentioned earlier two percent. Uh, that's not happening this year. We are in an incredibly inflationary period, you know, the cost of fuel alone. Has increased by fifty percent and Steve, you know, you could rattle the number off the top of your head. It's probably in the magnitude of four hundred thousand dollars in terms of how. You know, fuel costs affect city operations. So, you know, just to manage the expectations for all of you who may wanna. You know, think that you can bring a budget in at two percent. I, having, having looked at the budget for a number of days now, I just don't see. Uh, you know, reasonably how you could do that. I think that probably the best you're gonna do is three, five, three, eight percent. Uh, somewhere in there, but, but Dawn, Steve, um, yeah, this is, uh, exciting. I, I mean, I like it cause I like numbers, but I think you've done a, you know, you've done a fantastic job and, but to manage the budget. Significantly below three percent, certainly in the two percent range, you know, this is not, not something, you know. That I really see happening and Dawn, you nailed it with your comment, uh, about. Uh, having a, a full-time grant writer for the city along with grants, of course, comes an obligation, a local matching. Obligation that, uh, you know, the city has, has shown historically, most cities have. They're simply, um, you know, unable to afford. So, uh, you know, all good work, Steve, Dawn, council, uh, you're doing good stuff. Oh, hi Linda, how you doing? Ha- have another drink. It helps, okay? Um, but anyway, uh, I just wanna thank the manager and Dawn and, and the council for your good work on the budget. And I look forward to seeing you on, uh, on, in, on the, uh, but, or at the budget workshop. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, council, we'll move on to item nine F. This is council direction on the housing programs. Um, I did put in a memo and really this is just to have the conversation to try to divide up some of the workload and, and see if we can get some of these projects underway. Um, something, if not all three, could, uh, end up being something that we, uh, addressed with either ARPA funds or other mechanisms within the city. So. Um, I had proposed, uh, because these were three items that were related to housing. Um, and they're, uh, all on our priority list. So the two lot subdivision infill housing initiative. Councillor Hemmerich, you had brought that up, uh, as one of the priority initiatives. Um, if that's something that you would wanna take on, and I know, uh, councillor Stockwell, you've been talking with Polly and Montpelier. On those types of housing assistance programs. Um, so if that's something you wanted to take on, and I can follow up, uh, just to be honest, we, we have. Been contacted by Fecto. They have a, a property development. Um, if there was to be new road construction, we, we had to take a look at it to see if the city were to build it versus if, uh, the contractor did and what that would look like. If we can use our special assessment district, which, um, I can bring all this information in at a later point, but. Uh, I did wanna make sure that we can divide those up and actually bring it back in a timely manner so that we can have those as part of the conversations on housing. Is that something that?
Yeah, could we do this work together? Would it be possible for the three of us to do some of this work together?
Well, since it's not a forum, uh, the three of us could sit down and, and have those conversations and I'd be fine with that. Um, councillor Hemmerich, would you be fine with that too?
Well, yeah, I'd be okay with that, but I also worry that we might be jumping ahead of our new housing, housing task force that's just meeting. And, and, uh, I think we're starting to move. Projects forward for ARPA without having had that ARPA discussion and, um. And so I, you know, and when I think about the sequence of things, I think about, okay, let's think about, let's build consensus, let's establish goals. Uh, let's, uh, let's then create action items. And here we're moving action items forward. It feels like before, um, there's been, uh, there's been the ARPA conversation. And our housing task force is just, just getting going. So, um. So that's just gives me some hesitations.
Yeah, understood. At least at this point, we would have some research done. Uh, my intent here is just to make sure that. Uh, before it gets too far down the road, we don't end up being in a place where we don't have that work done. So. Uh, no action taking. I think, uh, Steve, you're gonna bring up back in sometime in December, that ARPA conversation. Uh, so we can have some of that process in place. We do have what would be an ARPA request for next week. So that's coming from our, our housing, uh, our homelessness task force. So that's an item that council can act on or not. Um, but that would be the first request that would come before the council. Councillor Hemmerich?
And, and Mr. Mayor, these, these items would, um, would be done completely without staff assistance. Is that? My understanding, it seems like that, uh, new road construction has already gotten a lot of staff time and. In addition to paper streets, has there been any staff time or legwork done on the, uh, infill housing initiative or the private housing assistance program?
So with the, the two lot subdivision, I don't even know all the details on that, so I'd have to say no. Um, for the private housing, I know councillor Stockwell has already reached out to Montpelier. And for the, uh, road construction, we have, because we had to have, uh, a determination on if we could use a special assessment district on this. So. Um, it's true, uh, that there is some work that has been done on that. I, I would look to the manager to see what the, the bandwidth would be to get some support on those. Steve?
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll do, we'll do our best to do what's asked of us. I mean, but quite frankly, right now, we don't have a lot of bandwidth. I mean, just to be candid. That's why we've got four positions in the, in the budget.
And if, if December, well, I, maybe that's, that's part of this too is. Um, as some of your research Jake, if you need more assistance from city staff on certain questions, that's what can come back before city council. Uh, you know, I'm not looking to make any decisions until we have that ARPA conversation either. But I just wanna make sure that we are in a spot where we can address some of them. And if, if we need some staff work time and in order to do that, we just need to make sure. We're allocating it as needed. So what I'll say is this, how about we, uh, revisit these items in about a month? That should be around the same time that we have some feedback from the manager on ARPA funds. And what process to take and see if there's anything that would coalesce around that. And I'll also give a little bit more time for your, uh, housing task force to meet and see if there's anything else that should be brought for consideration. Michael?
Yeah, um. Yeah, um, I don't want to sound like a wet rag, but I'm gonna, or a wet blanket, but I'm going to. It, you know, one of the things that we got to think about as we're talking about housing. I don't have a problem with a private individual making a risk on it. Uh, the idea of putting city funds into it is concerning to me, especially we're, we're coming out of a pandemic and we, we know that there's like 150, 300 units coming online in Berlin. And I, I just, I'm concerned that, you know, there's a big crunch for housing right now. But how long is that going to last for? And to invest the city money into that is, I, I think we would be better served to modify, if we're gonna, if we're gonna push for housing, we would be better served to modify our zoning to allow for intriguing ideas. I've talked to a, a person that would be interested in doing, you know, and, and you guys are going to laugh at me because you always laugh at me about this stuff, but you know, a-
Michael, we love you.
I know. But she, I had talked to her about, you know, her creating a, like a container, um, complex. Uh, and some of you may not know what that is. Um, it's, it's shipping containers that, that are turned into housing. And they look kind of nifty and, but I don't know if they qualify for our, you know, our zoning. And, but she, she would like to do like four to six units of that. And you can make them interesting, unique and, and good looking. Um, but I don't, I think, I think that's where we should put our focus. And, and I know that we're going to be talking about, you know, ARPA funds going into this and, you know, other, other money. And I don't know if that's a good investment for the city to do that. I think that's more of a private industry getting involved in that. That would be far better. Especially with the risk involved.
Councilor Stockwell?
I think that sounds like a fine idea. I think we actually need to experiment and to, you know, if, I know in the summer, the city was looking at the 80 pieces of property the city owns, some of which, many, many of which maybe would not be usable. Could also give them to a developer for a dollar and say, what can you do? Can you develop a different kind of home? Can you develop a container? I think that would be fine. I think it's well worth experimenting. But I don't think the need for housing is going to go away right away. It's a statewide lack of housing. And Berry has lost population. That has a significant effect on us. We've got to make, we've got to do some, we've got to try something. Not just with housing, of course, we also just tried to get more businesses and we really need some housing.
Councilor, you?
So one of the questions, are the 150 units you're talking about, the ones going up by the mall? Counselor?
Uh, yeah, right. That is, I don't know much about that, but they can, I, I've heard that they're like high-end units. But they're going to find that there's not that many high-end people and eventually that will go down.
Yeah, so that, that's, I believe that's all elder, elder retirement age housing. And like the shipping housing and the tiny housing and are all not family housing. And what we have are, is a huge lack of family housing and for people with disabilities, multiple, with multiple disabilities. And so there, like, like Councilor Stockwell said, there's a need for lots of types of housing. And we need to invest in all types of housing.
So, before anyone-
And I understand that, Your Honor, can I, can I please just reply to that?
I, I just wanted to state that we do have Cody Morrison in the room. If Cody wanted to give a little more update on what the project actually is, you indicate you. Come on up.
I, I'd still like to just reply to that.
Sure, go ahead, Michael.
Okay, just, just as a side note, as that comes online, people are going to go up there and that may result in people leaving Berry City, which will free up some housing in Berry City. For those that want to downsize during economic issues.
So, you know, the project, do you want to give a little background?
Yeah, and, and just to hit my introduction to the public, uh, my name's Cody Morrison, Executive Director of Berry Area Development here in Berry. Um, and my, my knowledge of the, the new town center project is relatively limited, I will admit. And, uh, Councilor, really, you are correct in that, um, the current development up there is more senior elderly housing. To the best of my knowledge, there's also as part of a, kind of bigger town center redevelopment. The best way that I can summarize it is like a mini Williston type of thing where there'd be mixed, you know, could be showing mixed income, private, public, you know, housing, you know, for all ages within an area and with an expanded retail town center. I believe there, there is talk of their municipal offices going up there. Again, you know, again, my, my, I've read a few articles about it. I haven't dove into the issue too, too much. But, you know, there is going to be some mixed income housing up there, private house, market rate housing. And also bigger commercial developments, walkability type things. And because Berlin really lacks a downtown dedicated area. And I think that's the issue that they're really trying to address with that, this bigger project.
Thank you. So, council, the intent wasn't to go all the way down the road of ARPA tonight. It really is to just make sure we can start working on some of those priorities. Uh, again, um, I would be open to having, uh, meetings because it would be three of us, so it's not public. And if each one of us brought to the table the items that we're considering and we can bounce some ideas off from each other. Uh, if there are staff resources that are needed for any of this, uh, we can bring that back as part of the presentation back to council. Councilor Hemrick?
Yeah, I'd love to work and show that Council Booton and I don't always disagree. Because, uh, I definitely agree with them that there are opportunities to, um, improve our unified development regulations. Unfortunately, the, the planning commission, um, did not, is not taking that up. Um, as I understand it right now, and there was, there was 500, there was a half million dollars of one-time funding just this year. Um, uh, that was available for bylaw modernization. So it looks like the, the, um, that there's just not the capacity to do that this year. Um, but that doesn't mean there won't be capacity in the future. And David Sickle is the Chair of the Housing Task Force. And Jenny Hislop, uh, of the Vermont Housing Conservation Board, who attended the, the last, um, All-In for Berry meeting, did offer BHCB fundings to do a housing needs assessment. And I think that might help, help guide the city in its understanding about, uh, what is our market in relation to, um, in, in relation to the region. But I, I suspect what it's going to show is that, uh, with the shrinking household sizes and, uh, the increasing pressure on, uh, from out-of-state purchasers and, and new residents and just the unaffordability of much of Northwest Vermont. Um, there are, there's, there would be demand for housing if we, if we build it here in the city. And any investments that we can make, I think is, is an investment, just like when we put in a parking law, is an investment i- in the city, except that in this case, we're not creating, uh, affordable housing for cars. We're creating housing for people. And, uh, and I think that's, that's a, that's a way we can nudge forward and, and grow the grand list over the long run.
Okay, thank you. Um, so council, if there's consensus on that item, then I'll move on to our, our last item. But we noted that we'd go into executive session first, um, for discussion with BADC. Uh, that's why we have Bob Lord and Cody Morrison here to have that conversation on our next appointment. Yes.
All right, so for Michael, Jake, Carol, Steve. Uh, the laptop which hosts the meeting is not working well right now. I don't have control over the Zoom right now. So what I'm going to do is shut down this computer, which will more than likely close down the Zoom meeting. And we will have to rejoin the Zoom meeting for me to be able to set up breakout rooms.
Teddy, just a, a quick, my computer here in the office, um, did the same thing about 45 minutes ago. Um, everything seemed frozen. What I did was the standard Ctrl, Alt, Delete. And I clicked on closing Zoom and the bad Zoom screen went away. And the bright Zoom screen just showed up. So I might suggest trying that first.
Yes, I will definitely try that. Uh, but if I close Zoom on this computer because it's the host, it may just close the meeting out.
Do you, oh, and do you want me to log in and, and as, and then I would be a co-host? Would that be helpful?
If she tries to-
I think so.
Yeah, go ahead and try it, Carol.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna have to, well, no, I should, yeah, I've got to leave. I'll be back.
Okay, we'll try that and then, yeah.
Yeah, and we won't be able to do it.
All I have is this fun little square.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think I'm needed for the executive session, so, uh, unless you deem otherwise, I think I'll leave the meeting. And I'll, and I'll start my second shift.
The, we, I mean, I'm assuming we'll have a action afterward, hopefully. Um, but really, I'd be the only thing is the appointment for a council liaison afterwards. So, um, I don't think anybody that wants to stick around has to. Um, so while Carol's looking to sign us in and out, um, I would look for a motion for findings.
So moved.
Second.
And the findings is, uh, for the premature discussion, we're talking about an appointment. Uh, and this would be as our liaison to the BADC board. Any discussion?
I, yeah, of course. Thanks. I'm not a fan of going in for the appointment, so I'm just going to say I'm going to vote no.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
One, one, one more item of discussion, never mind. I was just, we don't have an appoint, a, a pointee, uh, at the, the time. So what's the basis for an executive session?
So the appointees have been council. So right now, I think the discussion is what would be the best, uh, person from council in order to serve as a liaison with BADC? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay?
Nay.
Noted, Michael. And then a motion to go to executive session and we'll be inviting in Cody Morrison and Bob Lord.
So moved.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, David. There's a point of order. So it is out of order, but if the council's fine with it, we can do roundtable and we'll go back to that, uh, section where we go into executive session. So, I think everyone's fine with that. Let's start with, uh, on the Hollywood Squares first. Uh, Councilor Booton, do you have anything for roundtable? No. Councilor Hemrick?
Pass.
Just want to thank everyone who came out today and shared their views with the council. It is appreciated.
Thank you. So, um, mine will be a little bit longer. So I was able to attend the VLCT meeting, uh, since I'm a representative. Um, to know what the manager had noted earlier, it's not just Berry, it's all around the state of Vermont. Those, those hiring issues are, are out there and we're basically seeing, um, a market where they're fighting for the same staff. Uh, we got to find a way to get people trained and back into positions. So a much bigger issue to talk about. Um, the mayor's coalition will also be setting up a meeting here soon, uh, to talk about our legislative priorities that we had set. We want to make sure that we do focus them a little bit more. Some of those issues like Act 250 are things that impact the city directly. And I've reached out to our representatives to come into a future meeting so we can have that coordination before the legislative session happens. Um, and I'm glad to see that the infrastructure bill did pass. That's something, I think it will be a part of our budget conversations on the positions that we need. Uh, but, uh, not just that, but we've been working on it for a couple of years. Congressman Welch, uh, he's been trying to champion that for, for several years. So I'm glad that it finally came into, to being. Um, for future events, uh, it was mentioned earlier, so that scouting salute to Veterans Parade. Uh, in another hat, I'll be advocating that they do come back, uh, for that event. It would be most likely November 5th of next year. And we did hear back from Michelle, from the Friends of the Winuski. Uh, that will be set up for September 24th of next year as well. So they'll be back. Uh, this year we'll have, you know, a lot more time to, to plan around it for more people to be in attendance. Um, so I just wanted to mention those things. And now I will look for the motion to go into executive session.
Seconded.
Moving seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay?
Nay.
Executive session once we figure out our Zoom.
Whenever you're ready, yes. Good job, Paul. Okay.
Bye, all. Bye, Carol. Bye, Rick. Can we go home now? Can we go home now?